Good morning. All right, good morning, come sit down. We actually do have a quorum. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, August 8th, 2000. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bertson, Chick, Fuhrer, Galanter, Ober, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Forn, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present, and a quorum. Madam President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, those are approved.
On the regular agenda, item number 11, a request that that matter be continued to August 15th by Council District 14.
All right, if there's no objection, that is continued.
Item number six, a request from the Department of Building and Safety that this matter be received and filed, Council District 14 concurs.
Without objection, that will be received and filed.
On the regular agenda, item number 12 is the reappointment of Samuel Lopez Jr. to the Board of Information Technology Commission.
All right, before we take up any of the appointments, we have, we were supposed to get a report today from the Legislative Analyst's Office, I believe. Mr. Deaton, you were going to give us a report so we would have a coherent framework within which to do all these appointments, and we have lots of them on the agenda.
I think on your desk you have. Given the action of the council, what we did was, we put together an information sheet relative to each, given the information that we had and could get, could get access to in the time. This is item 12, so on council agenda, item number 12, the commission appointment is Samuel Lopez Jr., and we have the information relative to race, council district, voter address, et cetera, and then the composition of the existing commission, given the gender, race, neighborhood, and the date of expiration of the term. And then on the last page, you'll have a chart that shows the number of commissioners by council district, and the ethnicity of commissioners by council district throughout all the commissions, so you have a perspective on each of these commissions. The, as you recall, the motion was that the council about a year ago had suggested to the mayor that he take into account several of these factors in balancing out how commissioners was appointed. This gives you a thumbnail sketch of this person, each individual, as it relates to the individual commission, and then the two, the other two exhibits give you a perspective relative to all the commissions as to council district and ethnicity.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if, all right, nobody seems to have any questions yet, so let's go back to Mr. Luna.
Item number 12 is reappointment Samuel Lopez Jr. to the Board of Information.
Wait, 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 is that where we were?
We're on item number 12.
Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Lopez, council members? Is Mr. Lopez here? We don't see Mr. Lopez, okay. Council members? All right? All right, Ms. Chick moves confirmation, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that. Next item.
Item number 13 is the appointment of Albert Hudson to the Board of Directors, Los Angeles Community Bank.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, before Mr. Deaton leaves the desk, I wanted him to share with us what would be a game plan, if any, regarding the discrepancy of geographic appointments. You currently have 57 appointees from Council District 11. Council District 5 has 41. Council District 2 has 9. Council District 1 has 14. Council District 7 has 10. And when I'm asking that question, it's like, we all serve the same number of constituents. In some cases, our population base might be much younger, and, and if we do these piecemeal, we're never going to address the geographic question, which has been part of my whole thing. I, I keep on worrying because I think succession's going to work, and if succession was to happen in the city of Los Angeles, what would that do to our commission structure? We'd have to reappoint all over again, the majority of the commissions. I don't think there's a single member who doesn't live in the area that wants to succeed that is on the planning commission, or the previous planning commission. So, how do you recommend we address that? Should there be a moratorium on appointments from the districts that have an overabundance of them? What do we do?
Well, if you, at the point that it gets to the council, if, if the distribution isn't as you want it to be, then you have to say no. I mean, short of that, the council has no other role. It has sent a suggested policy to the, to the mayor, but at the end of the day, you either have to vote the commissioners up or down, based on whatever criteria, geography could be one of those criteria. I don't think there's any other, any other solution.
Right, and, and the reason I'm asking is because it doesn't necessarily have to be council boundaries, because our council boundaries kind of are gerrymandered in all kinds of directions.
Well, they're going to change in a year or two, anyway.
Right, and, and so when I'm talking about geographic areas, I'm, I'm looking at, at the population bases of the city that traditionally have had representation versus those who haven't, and how to create that balance. And if we had, now that we can produce these nice colored maps and stuff, that kind of shows areas that have an overabundance of commissioners versus areas that don't have them, we might be able to look at part of that, as part of a solution. But I just wanted to point that out, members, because doing a piecemeal by commission isn't going to address that problem.
Unfortunately, though, we're required to take each commissioner up individually, so we're going to have to do it piecemeal by commissioner. And let me just point out that the, Mr. Hudson's appointment to the nomination to the Board of, renomination to the Board of Directors of the Los Angeles Community Development Bank, that one has, in addition to Mr. Hudson, who's a resident of CD10, has a resident of CD8, one from CD1, one from CD9, and one from CD14.
Right, and, and Madam Chair, on my time, I'd just suggest that the three council districts that seem to have an overabundance of commission appointments tend to be the fourth, the fifth, and the 11th.
And both, all three of those are split between the basin and the valley, so you still have an answer, just by, your point is well taken. By looking at council district number, you haven't actually figured out geographic areas.
Right, but those tend to be the three council districts according to what's before us.
That's correct.
That have an overabundance, more than their fair share.
None of those is represented on the commission to which Mr. Hudson is nominated.
Right, and if we can keep that in mind in our voting.
Okay, Ms. Miskowski is next.
I was just going to point out that issue, and that is that the 11th district, as well as the fifth and the fourth, represent very distinct geographic areas within that district. In one area, although we all represent essentially the same number of people, that if we look just at geography, my district, for instance, its southern boundary is in the Palms community, its northern boundary is Van Nuys, and I can't think of, you can think of two more distinctly different geographic areas. So although those all happen to be lumped into the 11th district, what might be another interesting thing to do in this breakdown, if I can ask the CLA for that, and really, I think a more appropriate breakdown, rather than just council district numbers, given the oddity of some of our district lines, is to break this down by planning areas. Because planning areas get away from the, from the council district lines, but really start talking about distinct planning units, as we know, in the city, and do an awful lot of other things by, by census tract, et cetera. But I, I think that that's useful, and it'll be interesting, just for my own interest, to take the 57 that are in the 11th district and break them down in terms of those various geographic areas and planning areas, and I think we will be doing that as well. I, I did want to make that point, that it is, the 11th district is also the largest geographic district in the city. So if the geography alone is just one issue that you're looking at, this covers an awful lot of territory.
Mr. Holden.
I want to move to confirm Mr. Hudson. Is he here? Right, of course, I want to move to confirm him, but you know, they're just going to job on it a little bit, so you don't mind if I participate in that process. Very good. What we have here, Mr. Hernandez raised a good question, and the region of planning areas will not help because you have a greater area in which you will have a cluster of individuals from a specific community, not representative of the entire planning area. And that's to be one easy way to skirt the issue of having ethnic and gender participation. So planning areas should be out, not even considered. Smaller areas of the council district, 15 council districts, seven planning areas. Pardon? Yeah, well, that's what I mean. So you can have a whole, a cluster of people representing the entire planning area, which means that you never identified a problem. So it's easier to identify based on the representation in the council districts. I just did some math here. You've got 369 commissioners, 198 are from the area that we've been talking about, in the west side and the valley. And that leaves just a total of 171 for everybody else. So, you know, six and nine is 15, so nine districts are essentially not represented. So I don't think anybody, any member of the city council should accept that as, as a standard rule for equal participation in government. Now, having said that, I can't think of any person today before us, other than Mr. Albert Hudson, who's so eminently qualified to fill this post. Stand up, Mr. Hudson, so we can take a look at you.
Actually, Mr. Hudson, we should invite you up to the table.
He's done so much.
I don't know if you'll like it any better up there, but come on up.
He's done so much in such a short time span. He looks so young, you wouldn't think that he's accomplished everything he's accomplished in his lifetime. He's been Broadway Federal Savings and Bank, he's chairman of the board, he's been president of bank, his father was Mr. Silver Rice, Dr. Hudson, Claude Hudson. They even have a comprehensive sepsis in a name in his honor. I might say that Mr. Hudson, in closing, was a war hero. Remember the 99th Pursuit Squadron? Flew daylight missions over Germany. The 99th never lost a bomber. Great American. I got to tell you, we are proud to have you volunteer to serve the city of Los Angeles. You are the greatest. Thank you.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, the report that the CLA offers is sufficiently insightful as it relates to a concern that has been raised repeatedly since 1993. And we are still finding ourselves having to speak to it. The fact of the matter is, Madam President, the nominee before us is by far the exception. His demographics cause him to be unique in terms of those who are on the city commissions in this particular point in time in our city's history. It is precisely the point that many have attempted to make to this administration for lo these many years, that the Albert Hutsons of this city are well qualified to be in decision-making positions. And yet, almost with precision, this mayor, his advisors, have chosen by what is evident in the data that is presented to us today, the, the ethnic skewed commission appointments, the geographically skewed commission appointments have essentially caused the commissions not to reflect the composition of this city. Madam President, members of the council, I think it's indefensible, I think it's inexcusable, and it's further evidence that this particular mayor has been unwilling to tap into the best of what this city has to offer, and we are the less for it.
Ms. Goldberg.
Well, it's always interesting when five council districts, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 13 have fewer than, combined than a couple of the others. But I don't want to belabor that on this. I would just ask, though, that in the future, it would be nice to also have their resumes attached, since only the committees usually get the resumes. That would just be helpful. I, I really only wanted to stand and say that, that I will support this commissioner. I think that it's an excellent appointment, and I hope that we can get somebody's attention. But I'm not real hopeful, because it really has been seven years that we've been making this complaint, and the, and the reality is, is that the system is not designed to give the council any say-so about commissions. That's all. It's just not designed that way. And if that were true, that it wasn't designed that way before, under the new charter, it's even more true. Because now we not only have nothing to say about them being appointed, but if they get appointed and they're doing a good job, but the mayor wakes up one morning with a stomachache about something, they're gone, that they, and we can't do anything about it. So I, I think that the reality is, is that the commissions are a function of the mayor, and the mayor has been advised by the council, which is all we are allowed to do, that we are unhappy, and the mayor has said, "I don't care." So that's the way it is. And that's what our, and our resolve now has to be, to either vote them up or down, as we see that he has said repeatedly, not just yesterday or today, not with just this group, but over the last seven years, that he really doesn't care what our views are on these issues, and that's, that's his choice. And, but we, I believe, have an obligation where that we have not been able to get him to respect any notion of geographical, or in some cases racial and ethnic diversity, but mostly geographical, that it is our choice then to say no, and I hope at some point here, we will exercise our choice.
I hope not on this one, Mrs. Walters. No, no, I know.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say too, and about this nominee, that he doesn't come from the 9th Council District, but he is a person whom I count as a personal friend. He served the city with distinction for many years on the police commission. He has served in other capacities, and he has certainly served as an advisor to many elected officials, both African-American and Anglo. And I'm delighted to see him here, and it's with pleasure that I'll vote for him. But I too want to draw your attention to the data that has been presented to us, in terms of numbers of commissioners by council district. Council District 9 has 15, and everybody may say that's very good. Council District 9 is predominantly Latino and African-American in its residence. But when we look at the next piece of data, the ethnicities of commissioners by council districts, there is, there are two African-Americans who've been appointed from Council District 9. There are, there are several Latinos, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 Latinos out of the 15, and the rest are Anglo. So, you know, it's from CD9 and not from CD9. They should be balanced among the ethnicities represented in CD9. And that notwithstanding, I'm delighted to support Mr. Hudson's candidacy for this post. Mr. Wax.
As the council member who has the least amount of commissioners of any in the entire city, I'm totally free to do whatever I want to do. Actually, I'm free to do whatever I want to do, anyway. And I intend to just vote on some yes and some no. Mr. Hudson is the easiest. We should only have such easy choices. Geography is important for a lot of reasons, though, members of council, because geography is not only related to the traditional diversity qualities that we seek, but geography perhaps more than any relates to wealth. And the reality is, is the reason why you have so many from some places and so few from the others, because most people who serve on, who are asked to serve on these commissions have previously served by raising the amount of contributions, campaign contributions that their appointers, and that, that's been unfortunate, and that's, that's a reality, and that's what has to change. And one of the ways to change it is to try to do it through geographic diversity. Another way to change it is to try to change it through the backgrounds of people, the careers they've had, you know, the people not only who own businesses, but who work, people who are at all levels of the, of the economic scale. And we'll have a chance, and I think it's a good thing, Ms. Goldberg, that we're going to go through these one at a time, and look at each of the to go through these one at a time and look at each of the people. Geography certainly in other areas are particularly related to the actual job. If you talk about the harbor, the people in the harbor want commissioners from their area, who know it and understand it and can relate to the community. So we have a reason to raise all of these factors. Now's the time to do it. But this one is the easiest. This one, they should only all be this easy. Thank you for your continued willingness to serve. You are a role model for a lot of people, way beyond your own community.
Thank you. Round two, Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I also rise to support the appointee before us. I always thought Mr. Holden had only one fan club, now I find out he has two. But he's been a strong supporter of Mr. Hudson from the beginning of the process. And this is the Community Development Bank, and Mr. Hudson basically is-- has experience in this particular area. I wanted to caution everybody to make them aware that the list that's before you right now, presented by the CLA, is not correct. There have been some other appointments that we've made more recently that aren't reflected on the sheet for the Community Development Bank, and most of those appointees tend to come from banking institutions and financial institutions. I just want people to know that. And that's the direction the bank's going in trying to deal with some of the issues that it's facing right now. And it's real important that we get the support of the private sector financial institutions. Again, Mr. Hudson's background in trying to develop a financial institution in an era when that was hard for minority communities to do, I think brings some expertise that is necessary to the bank. I also wanted to point out to you, members, that this bank's appointments have changed. Initially, when we put the bank together, the appointees came through basic recommendations from the council at the very beginning. And each council member made appointed recommendations. This new wave of appointees is replacing that wave, and it's coming from the mayor. So this is one where we get to congratulate the mayor for the people he's appointing to the commission and the balance that he's creating, because I think it's helping the bank, in its current situation, have a clearer understanding of what they need to do in order to try and survive. And so with that, again, I commend Mr. Hudson for wanting to serve. I know that it took a few levels for him to get here of scrutiny, but at the same time, I think, I believe, that he understands the reasons why we've been asking the questions when we look at the overall situation in the city. Again, I fully support this appointee.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, how many more appointments do we have?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight more after this one.
All right, I'll reserve my comments for the balance of the appointees, and gladly move forward the appointment of Mr. Hudson. Let it be known that when we look at the totality of commission appointments, they are in different categories. This happens to be a rather unique one that calls for specialized skills, which obviously Mr. Hudson possesses. More to be said, Madam President, as we move through the agenda.
Let us try to move through the agenda and open the roll on Mr. Hudson's appointment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. You are approved forthwith on that. Thank you for your patience and your service to the city.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Item number 40 on the regular agenda--
Wait, wait, wait. What happened to all these other commissioners?
This is a continuation item.
Oh, all right.
A continuation item till September 15th, item number 40.
All right. Without objection, that's continued.
And item 41, receiving filed by the Los Angeles Housing Department. Council Office agrees, 41.
Okay. Item 41 will be received and filed, and it's my understanding that item 59 is being withdrawn from the agenda. Is Mr. Holden here? Was that right? We're withdrawing item 59?
If that's what you want, Madam President--
And I was informed by your lackey, Mr. Deaton, over here, that-- your lackey, that that's what you wanted.
Mr. De-- if that's what you want, Mr. Deaton, fine.
All right, that's what, Mr. Deaton, all right. Item 59 is withdrawn from the agenda. They can argue that out on the side. Just let's get item 59 off the agenda. All right, next item.
Item number 14, commission appointment. Appointment of Leopondo Bastista to the Board of Directors, Los Angeles Community Development Bank.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, members of the council, item 14. Seeing no council members wishing to speak--
Yeah, and I move the appointment, Madam President.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right. Anybody else hearing none? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you also for your patience and for your service to the city. Next item.
Item number 15 is appointment of Lee Cannon Alpert to the Board of Airport Commissioners.
Mr. Alpert. And Mr. Wax wishes to be heard.
Yes, Madam President, members of council, this is another appointment that I wholeheartedly And it has nothing to do with politics, because Mr. Alpert is probably one of the leading supporters of one of my opponents. But I have watched him in other roles, and particularly in the Department of Neighborhoods, in the neighborhood councils, and I have been amazed at the willingness to put in the time and the energy and to be as open and embracing as you've been in serving that. I think you have served this city well beyond the call of duty in your willingness to open yourself to that process and to put the time and energy in that you have, and I think that you have well earned this appointment, and I'm happy to-- thank you.
Ms. Goldberg. Which seat is this for, replacing--
I've been told it's replacing Mr. Wong.
Leland Wong.
That is correct.
There are-- not on your time, hold on, let's--
That's all right. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And there will be another-- the next item is another airport commissioner who's being appointed as one of the new seats created by the new charter. But Mr. Alpert is a replacement--
That's a person who lives in the area.
That's right.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm in somewhat of a quandary here, because on the one hand, I have no problem supporting Mr. Alpert in terms of his qualities and abilities. On the other hand, I have some grave difficulty with the removal of Mr. Wong unexpectedly, and at a point in time when we can-- the only reason that seems to make any sense as to why he was removed was because he is supporting a candidate other than the one that the mayor of the city is supporting. And for that reason, I'm not going to be able to support this nomination. And I feel sad to be put in this position, but I don't have any other mechanism by way of telling the mayor that I think what he did was inappropriate, except to vote no on this appointment, which makes me sad.
All right, I want to apologize if I lost somebody off the tally. I believe Mr. Burnson is next.
Yes, members of the council, I can't think of anybody that I know in my activities through the city that I think is more qualified, has better character, has served the community unselfishly with hours and hours and hours of his time. He and his wife have been just everywhere, anywhere that there is something that benefits our city and our community, he and his wife have been there. He's been the chair of my citizens advisory committees for the entire district for over 20 years. He's eminently qualified, and I think that it's very unfair to hold against him the actions of another. And Jackie, I know where you're coming from, but I don't think that's the way to cure it. The way to cure it, the way to cure it is to support my charter amendment, which is coming forth, and it'll be before us-- unfortunately, it won't be for the November election, but it will be for the April election, and that will be to require that a commissioner can only be removed if it overcomes-- the 10 votes of the council can override the mayor on a removal, unless it's for a cause that can be established for the remainder of their term. I would urge, and I vote on Lee. I think that there were some other circumstances. I don't know what the story was, but I understand there were some residency problems with one of the commissioners, and I'm not going to get into detail on that. It's not quite the same as the other removal that we're concerned about. Lee is eminently qualified, he's a terrific person, not to mention a very close personal friend, and I think that Joel said it best, and I think if Joel can put the politics out of it, and I think we all should, then I think that there's no reason why he should not be unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, when I got my package this morning, I had a sheet attached that said commission profile, and it showed two vacancies. Are there still two additional vacancies at the airport?
The new-- the new charter created two additional seats at the airport--
So a total of seven.
So there's a total of seven. Mr. Wong, as you know, was removed, and Mr. Alpert nominated to replace him. Ms. Schneg has resigned because she's been selected to become a judge, so that appointment has not-- that seat has not been filled yet. And then there were the two created, the geographic represented, one of which is confirmed, and the other one is the next item on the agenda.
So altogether, there'll be four appointments to be made.
That's correct. One of them, we've already confirmed.
Right.
We've confirmed Mr. Pack.
I just want to point that out, because, one, I will also support Mr. Alpert, but I'm recognizing the fact that Mr. Wong is from my district. And at the same time, when we talk about the airport of the city of Los Angeles, I understand the need to appoint someone from the district that is impacted by the airport. And I also would like to remind the mayor that the city as a whole should have appointments. And so when he's making more than one appointment out of a council district, when you have seven appointments, he's compounding the problem. I just wanted to make it clear that there was still three appointees that would be vacant, at least two that we would be filling, and that the mayor has that opportunity to deal with that deficiency, because those two will be reviewed a lot closer by my office. And again, I don't have any problems whatsoever with Mr. Alpert. I'm familiar with his work, and I commend him for his work, and I appreciate his work. And he needs to know that that's a strong motivation for me to support his appointment to this position. Thank you very much.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I also want to rise in support of Mr. Alpert. Sign me up on his fan club that he has here on the council, specifically to point out that we did have the opportunity to work together on the Building and Safety Commission. So I know a lot of us are familiar with his work. I've seen it firsthand, I've had the privilege and the honor to work side by side with him, and we are really lucky to have him, not only serving the city as a commissioner, but now on the Airport Commission as one of the most important commissions in the city, given the airport's role in the city and the region. So I want to congratulate Mr. Alpert and thank him again for his service to the city.
Thank you.
Ms. Chick.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to very briefly discuss with Mr. Alpert the Van Nuys Airport, because I know that some years back, you spent quite a bit of time on the Van Nuys Community Advisory Committee. And so I'm very pleased-- while I'm very not pleased about Leland Wong being removed from the commission, I am working very hard to separate that from looking at you as a highly qualified candidate, and I am going to support you. And I am particularly interested in the fact that while you are not filling the seat to represent the area impacted by the Van Nuys Airport, you know those issues very well. So I would like to hear just minimally from you in terms of the flyaway project and just whatever you're looking to do in terms of that, and then also the fact that the Van Nuys Airport has also been waiting many years, longer than LAX, for a master plan. It's been over 10 years in the making, and your thoughts on moving forward on that and the need to do that soon.
Well, Councilwoman Chick, thank you very much for your support. First, I think you are probably aware of the fact that I live within a half a mile north and a half a mile west of the Van Nuys Airport. So our home and our family is impacted by the airport as well. Second, I served for many years, and as chair for several of those years, of the Van Nuys Airport Advisory Commission, at which time we had issues that were very significant, and Councilwoman Burnson and you--
Sorry.
--and I believe other council members assisted us in making certain that development of about a million square foot of commercial and retail, non-aviation related, was not going to occur, where it impacted the neighborhood and it impacted the traffic patterns. I am not, have not been briefed yet, and I'm sure I will be, on the flyaway situation. I have two meetings set up if I am confirmed, one with Don Schultz and someone else from the Van Nuys Airport Advisory Group, and one with someone from the Department of Airports. So I am not-- I wish I could speak on those issues, but I can't because I don't have the knowledge at this point. I can only tell you that, as in the past, I have tried to take a balanced approach, as I did when I was on the Van Nuys Airport Advisory Commission, in terms of development, in terms of the impact on the economy that our airport has, and also in terms of the impact on the residents. And so as those issues come up, I try and deal with them singly, looking at a huge picture, but dealing with each issue to see what the impact is. Specifically as to your master plan, I have, when I was on the Van Nuys Airport Advisory Committee, and I was appointed by Mayor Bradley at that time, having replaced Bert Pines, I tried to push personally, along with many members of that airport advisory council, to get a master plan in place for the Van Nuys Airport. And so in answer to your question, I would very much like to see a master plan. I would like to see the Part 150 study completed--
Yes.
Okay? Which has not been completed for many years. And I think that it's important to do that, so that we can all plan for our future.
Okay, thank you.
That's my response.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chick, your time's up. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually wanted to also ask a Van Nuys Airport-related question, Mr. Alpert. You know, the Airport Commission, unfortunately, on my view, is the sole entity in the city vested with discretion to initiate new airport rules. And--
Can I have a little bit quieter, please?
And among the airport rules that I think has been the least effective from the commission is its effort to grapple with what is called the non-dition rule in Van Nuys. I proposed to the commission on more than one occasion, a very specific idea, that would actually have gotten rid of the noisiest jets, the stage-two jets. But over a phased period of 10 years, the Airport Commission rejected that approach and instead proposed an alternative, which was all the council had to deal with, and that alternative will keep in place the noisiest jets forever, with no incentives to change them out. The council was given a choice, either adopt that weak-kneed approach or do nothing. And the council, I think many of us feeling that it was not a good alternative, but the only choice, voted to adopt the tepid approach recommended by the Airport Commission. Were you on the commission, and this issue were to reemerge, would you vote for a non-dition rule that would eliminate the noisiest 50 or so odd jets stationed at the airport, which are not addressed by the non-dition rule that the Airport Commission recommended the council?
The answer to your question is, I don't know. And the reason I don't know is because I would need to see the language of it and study the impact that that would have, that would occur. I think, Councilwoman Fuhr, you are aware of the fact that I also tried to work with the airport, with your office, other offices, to try and create something that would be palatable for the community and palatable for some of the operators, and that did not occur, for whatever reasons. But I can also tell you that I am aware of the fact that there are some jets there that are excluded from the noisiest jets there, that are excluded from consideration because they are what's known as military aircraft that are no longer used for military purposes. I don't know the exact name of the jet now, but there are probably 10 or 11 of them that take off, and they have the loudest noise, but they are exempted from the noise ordinances. They also are, I've been told by pilots, one of the only jet that takes off from the Van Nuys Airport, that in and of itself, if one engine goes out, will go straight down. And that is something that is of great concern to me. So yes, I think it's important to try and balance the community, the neighbors, the noise that I hear and feel, whether it's jets or helicopters, but I think it's also important that we examine very carefully each ordinance that's passed, and try and make a determination as to whether or not there may be a better means that's more palatable of doing it. of doing it. So I can't answer that hypothetical now.
Yeah, what is, what is-
Okay. Mr. Fuhrer, your time's just about up. In fact, it is up.
In a phrase. What is so disappointing is that not only in the appointments process is this our only shot, but regarding substantive decisions by the Airport Commission, except saying yes or no, this is also our only shot. And I think there are a lot of people in the Valley who feel as though the failure of the commission to effectively deal with the cause of their concern, those jets that are currently operating, the complete failure to do with that, needs to be changed. And all I can say is, I hope that the newest appointees on the commission will work to actually do something that has an effective impact, as opposed to something that appears to, but in fact does very little.
I can tell you, I will do that.
All right. Now, there being no other, oh, Mr. Holden. Let me just remind you before you start that we have seven more appointees, we have a presentation to one of our favorite city employees who's leaving, and we have a very large item before us regarding the future of the Department of Water and Power. So, Mr. Holden.
You're an attorney, Mr. Alpert, right?
Yes, sir.
From the Valley?
Yes, sir.
And those issues that Ms. Chick and Mr. Fuhrer talked about primarily Valley issues, what influence would you have over that airport, if any?
Well, my understanding is that the Department of Airport oversees four airports, which are, and one of them is the Van Nuys Airport, and I think we'd need to look at that as an overall basis, an overall issue as well.
Sounds like what we need then is a separate Airport Commission, a separate authority, one dealing with the Van Nuys Airport, because that's local. Maybe you ought to serve on that one. And one dealing with LAX, which, you know, we have problems in that area, but nobody seemed to talk about those problems. Are you familiar with some of the problems and concerns surrounding there?
I am very familiar with some of the problems surrounding LAX. I have had discussions with the general manager when she called me to congratulate me on my nomination. I have also answered some questions. I mean, I use LAX, I do not use Van Nuys. I'm not a pilot, nor have I ever chartered a flight.
So you don't make any noise over Van Nuys?
So I don't make any noise. I make noise in our home, as I'm sure you're aware of.
Over the Van Nuys-
But not over the Van Nuys Airport, but-
Well, I have concern about you making noise in your home, too.
Well, you've been there.
Well, I helped you to do that, didn't I?
But, but in any event, no, I do. And as I said to the, to the press person who asked me, and as I said to the general manager of the Department of Airports, that we need to look very carefully at an overall plan. I would like to do that. I also think that traffic mitigation is very important. I've been up to San Francisco and see what they've, seen what they've been able to do with some of their traffic problems, with new roads and bridges and the new terminal.
Bottom line is that-
Yeah, I'm ready for-
Nobody's mad at you or concerned about that, but as Ms. Goldberg said, we should not be playing politics with commission appointments, period. And that seems to be what the, one, what we think is happening. You know, for this race for mayor, we have some on one side and some on the other side. And some have been with families for the very beginning, you know how that is. You just got caught in the crossfire. But I, this should not have any influence on how you make your decision, I would hope.
It would not.
It should not. We don't have the authority we had before to recall you, but we can always pass another charter amendment to make that happen. You see what I'm saying?
I do, but I think you know I've worked with your office fairly well, and with Louis White.
All right. Don't bother with his time there. Open the roll on Mr. Alpert's appointment. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes, one no.
Your appointment is approved, you're confirmed. Thank you for your service.
Thank you all very much.
Now, I'm going to take a break here in order to recognize Ms. Chick for a presentation, and then we're going to go back, and I would just want to keep you informed that the next item on the appointments list is the appointment of the person to the new seat on the Airport Commission to take care of the Van Nuys Airport. Mr. Alpert was not that particular appointment. So Ms. Chick, are you ready?
It's also Mr. Fuhrer.
And Mr. Fuhrer. And me, except I have to sit up here.
Do you have to stay in the chair?
Yeah. Are we ready?
Yes.
Does she know we're doing this?
I don't know. I think she, of course she-
We would like to ask our beloved Victoria Carion to come up here, please.
Here I am.
There you are, in the middle.
Between the two of us.
Okay.
We know we can find you.
I wanted to take this opportunity, excuse me, to, and I'm smiling, but I'm not feeling happy, and Councilmember Walters is joining us. Pretty soon, we're going to have the whole council up here. Victoria is a very special member of our chief legislative analyst staff, and most of you already know that she and her husband are leaving for a different adventure, and she is leaving the CLA staff. It's going to be a great, great loss to Mr. Deaton and to all of us. But I wanted to say a special thank you, because if it were not for Victoria and the hard work that she's done on Prop K and administering those funds, we wouldn't have some of the wonderful projects we already have and those that are coming, and in my district especially, the Junior Arts Facility, which came in under budget and under time or under schedule, and that would not have happened without you, Victoria. So on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, and especially in the Third Council District, I wanted to present you this plaque for playing an essential role in the creation of the Canoga Park Youth Art Center. Thank you very much, and you're going to be missed.
Thank you.
After Mr. Fuhrer, there's going to be a long chain of people who want to say things, so just sit tight. Go ahead.
Madam President, there is a no-good nick in our midst. An evil force bent on decimating the city of its strength at every turn. That disreputable individual is standing over here. His name is Ruben Garcia. It's only because Victoria Carion loves him so much that she is leaving us, and we will never forget this, Mr. Garcia. Neither nor forgive, as Ms. Walters adds, but that was implicit in the introduction. Victoria is, as we all know, leaving because her husband, Ruben, has obtained a very important appointment in Madison, Wisconsin. And Victoria, a superstar in her own right, is joining him against the good advice of almost everyone she's come in contact with here, but probably the parents think it's a good thing. So Victoria has been such a remarkable member of our team here. She is fearless, courageous in her analysis, tells it like it is, is ferociously intelligent, is able to really contest one on the most important issues in the city, and is effective as can be with a work ethic that is really rivaled by very few who are here. As I kidded in the Budget and Finance Committee, more than once, I, among others here, attempted to dissuade her from staying in the CLA's office, but the point, Victoria, was not to go to Wisconsin, the point was to come to our offices instead. So we weren't effective, but at least we, I don't know what we planted in you. But Victoria has been terrific. All of us will miss her enormously, because it's really a rare thing that that combination of talents which Victoria possesses exists in one person. And for all the talents and skills she has, she's also one of the warmest, most friendly people with a very gentle and lively sense of humor. And Victoria, it's going to be very tough to not have you here anymore. We've been adapting slowly, and then you came back, so the withdrawal has to happen all over again. Congratulations, Victoria, on a new appointment in Wisconsin, and we hope and expect to see you back here in another role, because you're really a star here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mrs. Walters, and then I still have at least four more. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to add to Mr. Fuhrer's long list of really wonderful things that Victoria represents. I want to say, and she's a woman.
Yay!
Yes. She's a woman in this position, in a non-traditional role. And I have to say thanks to Ron Deaton. He's had three women who are stars in the financial world in budgeting matters and all of those things. You know, those are things that they say women can't learn, or little girls can't do, and Victoria has certainly proven that wrong. And I just, my heart aches, but I do want to wish you the very best. And yours is a position, you know, somebody else may come along, but it won't be, they can never take their, your place in our hearts for the kinds of things that you've done. And I know Prop K would not be the success it is, whether it's Ms. Chick's district, Mr. Fuhrer's district, or my district, if you hadn't been there to interpret all of these rules and make them applicable where they are applicable and head honcho these projects through. So you leave a big hole, Victoria.
No, thank you.
You really do, you really do. But I am so proud of you for your success. You're young, you're Latino, you're female, you've got the world before you.
Thank you.
And I really enjoy your success.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, most of my colleagues at the podium have already stated what I want to state about Victoria, except I have no idea what Mr. Deaton's going to do now.
Neither does he.
And my, my opportunity to work with Victoria was because of Proposition K. And you need to understand that most of the time, I kept on questioning her why it was that we couldn't do certain things, and she kept on explaining to me why it was that we couldn't do things. At the same time, in those explanations, she kept on trying to figure out how to get things done. And when the voters supported Prop K overwhelmingly, with that sixty-four vote margin, the reality is we've made some commitments to the voters that we would try and apply these funds to create open space and park space throughout the city. And I think that the first three years of a five-year plan have done exactly that. And you need to know, Victoria, that in terms of the Oversight Committee, in terms of the financing packages that we've had to put together because of Prop K, your diligence has paid off. And you can take claim for a few community centers, for a few parks, for renovations to our parks, for the fact that kids in the city of Los Angeles are enjoying the fruits of your labor. And I just wanted to commend you for that, because we know that we're going to have to find someone to fill those shoes and continue that work, but you were totally a professional, and you did a phenomenal job for us, and I just want you to understand that I appreciated that work.
Ms. Goldberg.
Well, we, we tried to adopt her as a member of our staff, but she wasn't interested. She was interested in serving everybody, and that's really, I think, your extraordinary gift, is that you really look at it as serving everybody. And we did, did honor her already in CD thirteen as our department hero, because really the skill with which you work and the ability to find the answers when no answer appears to be possible in situations is really quite a gift and quite genius. And I know I speak for not only everyone in my office, but all of the constituents in my district who have been the beneficiaries of your effort. And I think that if we went around the room, each and every one of the members here would say that, which is truly a remarkable thing to be able to do. And I just wish you very good luck, and I hope that at some point or another, fortune will bring you back to Los Angeles, because the city certainly would be well, well-served to have you working for us again.
Thank you.
Ms. Mizakowski.
Let me just add that whereas our colleague, Mike Hernandez, is the author of Prop K, the legislation, Victoria, I think we all here are saying you are the author of its success. And as Ms. Chick has given you a plaque representing one, one project that is going to be fulfilled as a consequence of your diligence, we could all go around this room and give you a plaque for any number of projects that are facilities, open space, or the like, and you could, you need another moving van to take back to Wisconsin with you with all those plaques. So let that one represent all of the goodness. And there's not just going to be a hole in Mr. Deaton's operation in the CLA, there's really a crater now. It's going to be an insurmountable effort to fill this. And I think I have not seen in all my years of the CLA's office, an employee who had him running to stay in place. I mean, you were so far upfront in interpretation and knowing what was going on, not only in the Prop K implementation, but in budget issues and the like, and it's healthy and good to see someone be challenged that way, and you challenged all of us. I'm personally glad that you didn't take the offer from Ms. Goldberg or Mr. Fuhrer, and that you were there for all of the city, because everybody benefited in your place and Mr. Deaton's wisdom in hiring you and putting you there and keeping you there for as long as he could. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernson.
I just want to add my best wishes and congratulations to you. I think everything's been said. I mean, we all recognize your contribution. I just want to recommend to you that when you hit the first winter in Wisconsin, that you have plenty of warm clothing, and you'll think about us then, and you're always welcome back, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. Oh, maybe I've, I've lost Mr. Deaton. Mr. Deaton, did you want to explain to us how you're going to take care of this loss? Then it'll be my turn.
As usual, when left in doubt, I talk, but the-
Don't feel obligated.
I appreciate that. Now, when Victoria came to me and she said that her husband had got this fellowship and this new position in Wisconsin, I immediately asked her what he was going to do all the way back there by himself, and that didn't work. I'd just like to say that rare is it that a person can crunch the numbers, see the policy issues, be firm, and be friendly. The combination is unusual, and Victoria has A pluses on all counts, and we'll all miss her very much.
Thank you. I think we will, Victoria, for all those reasons. My staff was absolutely devastated when I told them you were leaving, and they, but basically, they kept saying the same thing, "But wait, she got all this done for us, she got all that done for us, what do we do now?" So we, of course, expect you to leave an exit memo that will answer that question for us before you leave. I do want to wish you well. I'm sure you'll have a wonderful time in Madison. It's supposed to be a great place, except for the cold. And I want the rest of you to know that my dubious distinction is I tried to get her a job there, but I have assigned Mark and Eve Galanter, Eve being a former alderman of the city of Madison, to make sure that Victoria behaves herself. So-
Thank you.
Good luck, have a wonderful time. Please come back and visit.
Thank you. Okay.
And now it's your turn.
Okay. I just wanted to thank all the council members. It's been quite an experience working at the city, one that I'm sure will never be surpassed in whatever I do. And I want to thank Ron, of course, and, and I think the thing I will remember most about Ron is that nobody else that I've ever met has as much heart for the children of the city of Los Angeles. And I want to thank Steve Wong, who is not here anymore, but he's the one who hired me and took the chance, and he was a wonderful mentor. And I also want to thank Sharon, where is she? There she is, who has always been a wonderful boss and also a wonderful friend. And I also want to thank Ruben, who should come over here.
Where we can get our hands on him.
Who survived many budget seasons, many night Prop K meetings, and has been a wonderful husband, and I'm glad that he's coming with me to Wisconsin, actually.
Taking him.
And I think that's, I also want to thank all of my friends in the former CAO, now Ores, Jody, and Denise, who's now at the zoo, who came to say hi, and all of the people in Recreation and Parks, Richard Klink, who I think came by to say goodbye, and it's been just a wonderful experience working here at the city, and I will never forget it. Thank you.
Okay, resuming our agenda.
I had a number sixteen, the appointment of Mark Schaefer.
Did we do fifteen?
You did do fifteen.
Okay.
I had a number sixteen, the appointment of Mark Schaefer to the Board of Airport Commissioners.
Step this way. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the first appointment to one of the, no, it's the second appointment, to one of the new seats added to the Airport Commission. Ms. Chick.
Yes, I'm very pleased about the creation of the two new positions on the Airport Commission, and you are being asked specifically to fill the one representing the areas most impacted by Van Nuys Airport. I'm just interested to hear what you see as some of the key issues that the Airport Commission has to deal with regarding Van Nuys Airport. And then before you respond to that, I neglected to say this to Mr. Alpert, I think he also is aware of it, though. Very often, the Van Nuys Citizens Advisory Committee feels out of the loop of airport, Board of Airport Commission business and department business. And so I would also be interested to hear your thoughts about trying to improve that relationship and how you might be able to, as specifically the representative, most involved- relationship and how you might be able to, as specifically the representative most involved in those issues, be the link between the department and the commission and the Van Nuys CAC.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Like Mr. Alpert, I have not been briefed by the department on the issues affecting any of the airports that are part of the commission. I have been a resident of the San Fernando Valley for over 30 years. I was born here in Los Angeles, spent my professional life here. My commitment is to use my best judgment for things that are in the best interest of the city in general, and in particular of the residents in the geographic area for which I'm being appointed or nominated. But until I have the opportunity to be briefed and really understand the issues, I think it's a little bit premature for me to have a view.
And I have no reason not to support your appointment, and I will do that today, but I'm concerned and regretful that you haven't been briefed by the office that's appointing you, because this position in particular, at least it was my understanding, was created to put someone on the commission that was very well-versed with these issues. I think there's a lot of stakeholders in the San Fernando Valley that are very much looking to you to do that. And I'm not advocating that you take a particular position on an issue or not, but simply that you come to the table especially. And colleagues, this has been my concern about some of the changes. This isn't a change, this is a new position and an appointment to fill it. But in the 10 months remaining in this administration's term, it's hard to ask volunteers to get up to speed in such a very short time, and then the likelihood of replacement because there'll be a new mayor. So I think you're going to have a lot of reading and a lot of catching up to do, and I and others will be looking to you to very much be that liaison between the department and the commission and the Van Nuys Airport. And I hope that you're also a voice to hold more commission hearings at the Van Nuys Airport, that's something that hasn't happened enough.
Okay, your time's up. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Herr, because you haven't had a chance to be briefed, which I only learned after I pressed my button, obviously, I can't ask you with the same degree of specificity to comment on the series of questions I asked Mr. Alpert. But I wanted to at least say for the record that I think it's especially important that as you join the commission, that you actively work to create commission actions which are effective at addressing the concern that gives rise to them in the first place, rather than, I think, attempting to fashion something that appears to satisfy everybody a little tiny bit and therefore is largely an ineffective approach. And I think the non-dition rule in particular is an example of that. Again, just the minor briefing I'll share with you is that what the commission did was to create a rule that has the effect of limiting new noisy jets at the airport, but allowing those which exist now to stay there forever. And the ones that exist now, of course, are the ones that are the reason that people felt there was a need for the rule in the first instance. And so I really hope to heighten your sensitivity to that issue and urge you to revisit it as a commissioner, because the commission can do a lot better. All of us in the city can, and the Valley residents who are adversely affected deserve that.
Thank you, I will take a look at that.
Ms. Mizakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Like my other colleagues, I'm very pleased that this seat was created. And it's interesting, I think Ms. Chick asked Mr. Schaefer how he sees the Van Nuys Airport issue. When I met with him this morning, I didn't ask him if he could see the Van Nuys Airport. I asked him if he could hear the Van Nuys Airport, and he said, "Most definitely." And I think that, in particular where he lives, and that is south of the airport runway, which is the area where most of the takeoff impact occurs, and those who belong to the organizations saying, "Stop the noise," and I think the bulk of those who are really frustrated and living with the airport negative impacts day in and day out are those areas not north or west of the airport, but those south and east. And so that he is from that geographic area in particular, I think, is going to be more telling in terms of a day-to-day living with that environment than he's now going to have some opportunity to impact and participate in. So I believe that from our conversation today, both from where he is geographically as well as those -- that we now have two members on the Airport Commissioner, will have with this confirmation, who are in and around and impacted by the Van Nuys Airport. I think that that will help and go a long way in terms of establishing those liaisons, perhaps even by way of a subcommittee, to really create that network with the Van Nuys Airport Citizens Advisory Committee, and really make sure that it's not the stepchild or afterthought of the Bureau of Airports, which is how it's always been in the past. So I am pleased by this appointment, pleased of the airport's impact on your hearing ability, and I look forward to seeing you work with the other commissioners to really bring this to the attention as is appropriate to the agencies to do something different.
Thank you.
Mr. Wax.
I think that in light of my colleagues' comments, it's a little redundant now, but other than to point out, I mean, on paper, you've got fantastic qualifications. I think what the council members are pointing out is that LAX and LAX expansion isn't the sole issue before an Airport Commission. Van Nuys Airport is obviously affects a lot of us, but the whole issue of air transit as a regional issue that affects everyone in some way, positively or negatively, and the need to connect and interconnect communities of interest that have -- saying this becomes really important as we approach any of these problems. So that we have to go beyond -- as important as each one is to the people surrounding it, it also has an impact upon the people in a broader area, and the need to take this sort of broad overview, otherwise we'll probably get nowhere, and everything will be bogged down, and nothing will proceed unless we somehow can begin to develop some kind of a regional consensus on air transit. So I welcome your talents to the board and hope that you'll keep in mind that it's more than just one thing, but it's all affected by your decisions. And a lot of people -- I'm finding this now, particularly as I go around the city, that everyone has -- everyone's coming at it from perhaps a different vantage point, but everyone has an interest on the future of air transit in our area. So you have a broader scope to your job, and I welcome the fact that you're willing to devote your time and effort to this. I think it's a really good appointment.
Thank you.
Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That's done, you're approved. Thank you, confirmed. Thank you for your service and your patience, and forthwith on that.
Item number 27 is the reappointment of John Wentworth to the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners.
Mr. Wentworth. Councilmembers, I hear a motion of approval. I see --
Sir Vornich says it's a good guy.
Sir Vornich must have moved to -- sit down. Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wentworth.
Thank you very much.
Forthwith on that, please. Next item.
Item 28 is a reappointment of Carol Rowan to the Board of Harbor Commissioners.
Ms. Rowan informed us when this came up on the agenda that she had to be out of town today, so she's unable to be here. Ms. Goldberg.
Is there someone here from the Harbor Commission?
There's somebody here from the Harbor Department.
Harbor Department? I just had a question about a rumor, long as we got -- about hers.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, I wouldn't break it up.
Bob?
I don't know. She was here the other couple --
Is there some matter that she's being flown in at department expense for great distance to pay for her to come to vote?
I am not sure about the department expense. What is happening is that the Mariska Pacific Limited has agreed to the long-term permit for Pier 400. She's in Breckinridge, Colorado, trying to get back here in order to vote tomorrow. Visa takes a four-fifths vote of the commission in order to approve the item, so.
And the reason that you didn't have enough commissioners was?
Well, she is -- we would all have four.
She's been on the agenda three times.
No, no, no. She's a reappointment, so she continues to vote. So you're short, though, because?
Well, I don't know why the other two would be, but we needed four votes, and she would be the --
Well, actually, you're short because the mayor fired some commissioners before this vote was taken. Isn't that basically correct?
Yes, I understand Mr. Stein may be there, though.
I'm sorry?
I understand Mr. Stein may be at the meeting.
Oh, so he's still allowed to vote?
The charter interpretation is that he is still the president of the commission.
Until someone's confirmed. Okay, so then she's coming back because you still need her, even with him still being here?
That's what I understand. We still need her to come back to make the --
I see. Okay, I just heard this rumor, I just thought I'd ask somebody before we voted on it.
Mr. Wax.
Are we going to vote on this today, or are we going to continue it?
The last day for council action is the 18th. We've continued it, I believe, twice so far.
If we're going to vote on it today, I'm going to vote against it and simply say that if any commission has disappointed a big part of its constituency, it's been the Harbor Commission. As I go to the Harbor area and I meet with people throughout the Harbor area, I've rarely heard a community more unhappy with a lack of representation of that community's interests. Most people in the Harbor area see the Harbor Commission as caring only about the port and not caring about the community in which the port not only resides, but the community that the port could be a great asset if it chose to. And I made a commitment and feel strongly about the need for members of the Harbor Commission to come from -- represent the broad diversity, but come from the Harbor area itself. And Ms. Rowan does neither, and I cannot support her reappointment.
Thank you. Let me just point out that I believe the Harbor Commission, like the Airport Commission, has a designated position as a result of exactly that concern. Mr. Holden.
Just Carol Rowan, I'm going to vote for reconfirmation. I got to know her through Tom Bain, Marlene Bain. They're very good friends, and I got to know her well, and her husband, who's a judge. I must tell you that you may be brought before him sometime. And he's a good guy, and he won't remember what you're trying to do to his wife, and so therefore he won't punish you just because you're doing that. But I would say to you that this reappointment is -- should be approved. Her record is unblemished. She's a loyal, dedicated public servant, and I'm just going to vote for a reconfirmation. She was friends of two good friends of mine, and I got to tell you, Tom Bain and Marlene Bain, some of you know, I'm sure. I think it's one in one party and one in the other party, but it doesn't make any difference. It's kind of an unpartisan family, and so I'm going to vote for reconfirmation.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, and again, not looking at the appointee before us, but looking at the chart presented to us by Mr. Deaton, this particular commission has currently one appointee from the 15th Councilmatic District, as well as one appointee from the 10th -- is it the 10th? Ninth Council District, and three appointees from the 11th Councilmatic District. I want to point out that Ms. Rowan is from the 11th Councilmatic District, and I think that that's a definite disparity in terms of geographic representation, and that would be the sole reason why I would not be supporting this appointment at this time.
All right, let me just point out that she would be the only representative from the Valley, whichever Council District she's from. All right, open the roll, close the roll. Wait, sorry. We got you. Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 2 noes.
All right, that's approved. Forthwith on that, next item.
Item 29 is the appointment of Brenda Freiberg to the Commission on Disability.
Ms. Freiberg. Members of the council? Ms. Walters.
Thank you. Ms. Freiberg came through my committee, and I'm delighted to highly recommend her to serve in this position. She was previously in the mayor's office, where I think she served with distinction. I've known Ms. Freiberg for a number of years and known of her work, her work in the AIDS community, and her work across the board for working for Better Life in Los Angeles. And I want to commend her for the work that you've done in the past on the AIDS issue, and I want to thank you deeply for agreeing to serve for this.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnson.
Members of the council, all the things that you say may be accurate, but unfortunately, I have a little problem, Ms. Freiberg. Ms. Freiberg was not as cautious as she might have been in making remarks about members of this council, myself included, publicly. And frankly, I have to vote against you, Ms. Freiberg, because I think that was indiscreet on your part.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I have no idea what you're talking about, but.
Would you like for me to spell it out for you publicly?
I really have no idea.
Okay, well, you made a remark in an elevator that I was a lightweight, and unfortunately, that type of stuff -- I may be a lightweight, I lost about 20 pounds, but I think that those types of remarks, if you make them, you should be careful who you make them in front of, because it did get back to me.
I never made such a comment.
Mr. Wax.
Jeez, I'm sort of speechless now. Afraid if I was this thought that way, we wouldn't have any commissioners. I don't know. I worried about what they said about me. I do know Ms. Freiberg, and I want to echo what Ms. Walters says. This is a very brave and courageous woman who has used her life experience, the painful parts as well as the good ones, to make life better for a lot of other people. And I'm just -- I think it's a wonderful appointment. I'm very happy to support Brenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
If I were in the Senate still, let me tell you one thing right now, you would not be confirmed based on just what Mr. Burnson said. They stick together, both parties, on anyone who would attack the House. That's just the way they are. They fight like cats and dogs, but when it comes to the members standing up for the members, that's what they do. The city council, they don't know anything about that kind of cohesive force of working together. But do I look heavy enough to you? But I'm just -- I've got to stand with my colleague, I have nothing against you. That's just the way I am. He's not happy with you, for whatever reason, unless you can tell me whether you said that or not.
I said to Councilman Burnson that I never made such a comment, and I did not, so I repeat that to you.
So therefore, someone just who don't like you passed a rumor.
I have absolutely no idea.
If you got back to his ears, they tried to do you harm, obviously.
I have no idea.
And you would not make a statement like that. Is that what you're saying? Yes? Okay. A-ha.
Mr. Fuhr.
I just very briefly wanted to join with those who have had personal experience with Ms. Freiberg and know that this is not only somebody who has successfully served the public in both political and community roles, but also is a very good match for the commission to which she is being appointed, as Ms. Walters indicated, which is not always true. And to find somebody who has life and community experience on the very issues that she'll be dealing with as a commissioner is, I think, a very important precedent to be setting here, and I will be supporting Ms. Freiberg.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, whether we're called lightweights or heavyweights, I'd like to be known as someone who's more complete than most people, but my doctor doesn't look at it that way. Members, and I will also stand to support Ms. Freiberg's nomination. When she worked for the mayor's office, I basically worked with her through the Community Economic Development Committee and understood her concerns and her ability to understand my concerns in regards to the issues of the human service delivery system. This commission, unlike many others, has a disparity, not a disparity, but bears basically more parity in regards to geographic representation. But I think it's dealing with a population base in the city of Los Angeles and basically that lacks representation on many issues. And I think it's important that their voice be heard and understood. And it's been because of my previous working experience with Ms. Freiberg in regards to her understanding of issues that I'm willing to support her. I think that she will be an asset to the commission and will bring some communication skills to the commission in regards skills to the commission in regards to them being able to deal with those disparities. I want to point out, yesterday, we're dealing in Community Development Department regarding access ramps in terms of our sidewalk program. And we are, as a city, are definitely behind in regards to our infrastructure work that has to be done. But it's something that, again, that voice has to be heard and resources have to be applied. But when we talk about ADA compliance, nobody had thought of looking for exemptions in the block ramp, because it doesn't necessarily have to apply to low and medium poverty census tracts, because we're talking about an exemption for something dealing with ADA. And that's a request that we had never even considered. So I just wanted to kind of point that out, that, again, we need to communicate more the issues that have impact to disabled and how it is that we can deal with those issues. And I think Ms. Freiberg will be an asset in that direction.
Thank you.
Goldberg.
Yes, I'm happy to support this commission nomination. I too have had an opportunity to work with Ms. Freiberg over the years and think she will do an excellent job here. Is Mr. Deaton still in the room? But I would, Mr. Deaton, I would like on commissions that have specific areas like disabilities, it would be also helpful to have information about how many persons actually with disabilities are on the commission, you know what I'm saying? Just add another column for those that have specific categories like that, because I have no way of knowing on this issue. And I think that would be a good thing, again, to urge the mayor to look at. In this particular case, I know that, at least I'm not aware of any disabilities you have, but I am aware of your own involvement with folks who do, and so I'm very happy to support this nomination.
Okay. Open the roll. Close the roll.
Mr., I want to say that Mr. Burnson, I talked to him. He released me to vote for you. He says it's okay.
Okay. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
That is approved. Thank you very much, Ms. Freiberg. Fourth with on that item.
Item number thirty is the reappointment of Mary Louise Longoria to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners.
Ms. Longoria. Okay. Members of the council?
Move.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
You are approved. Thank you very much. Wasn't that an anticlimax?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fourth with on that, please. Next item.
Item thirty-one is the reappointment of Pat Herrera Duran to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners.
She's not here. All right. I have a motion for approval. Anybody else? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. And I believe that brings us to the end of the commission items, commissioner appointments. Let us go through the agenda and if, we'll note which ones are going to be special, get rid of the routine stuff, and then we're going to recess the regular meeting and call to order the special meeting, try to get that underway, then we're going to go back to, as we keep going. So, Mr. Clerk, let's go through.
Items number one through ten on the regular agenda, with the exception of item six, these are items that are noted for public hearing.
All right. We have cards on items one and five, so let's call those special. And we should be able to, there's, excuse me a second. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on two, three, or four? Hearing none. The items are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Okay. Next.
Point of information was number nine held for a speaker card.
Yeah. We only did two, three, and four there.
One through five.
We have cards on five. We have cards on nine.
One, five, and nine were held. Two, three, four, seven, eight, and ten were approved.
Oh, all right. I thought we were only up to five. Okay. Council members, unless there were any specials we didn't catch on seven, eight, or ten, those are approved as well. Okay. Next.
Items number seventeen through twenty-six on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. We have cards on seventeen and eighteen, but there have been public hearings on those.
Oh, I'd like to call both of them special.
You want to call both of them special? All right. Seventeen and eighteen are called special by Ms. Goldberg. I'm sorry. What was the number you went through there?
No, nineteen through twenty-six.
Nineteen through twenty-six. Do we have any specials?
Twenty-three special.
Twenty-three special, Ms. Goldberg. Anybody else? All right. Open the roll on nineteen through twenty-two and twenty-four through twenty-six. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. What else? Next.
Item number thirty-two is a communication from Department of Administrative Services regarding a bid resolution. To read into the record, the winning bid is awarded to Stone &amp; Youngberg, interest rate of 4.437865 percent. The resolution needs to be adopted. Motion required.
All right. Mr. Fuhrer moves. Mr. Padilla seconds. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. Next.
Items number thirty-three through sixty-one on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Forty and forty-one have been acted on.
All right. We have, okay, the only cards I have are on item sixty-three. All right. So the public hearings on, Conrad, give me the numbers again, and then, I know Ms. Walters wants to be recorded.
Items number thirty-three through sixty-one.
All right. Thirty-three through sixty-one. And Ms. Walters, I understand that you want it to be recorded as a no vote on item fifty-three.
Item fifty-three, yes. I want to be recorded as a no vote, because I'm opposed to the specialized private parking permits.
All right. So let's, we'll just take a separate vote on item fifty-three. Let's open the roll on the others. Thirty-four through sixty-one, with the exception of fifty-nine.
Forty.
Forty, forty-one, fifty-nine, and fifty-three. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. Those are approved. Now we'll take item fifty-three. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
No, no. Mrs. Walters wants to be a no on that one. Thirteen and one. Okay. So record Mrs. Walters as a no vote. Those are approved. And that brings us to...
I have been advised by the city attorney that item number sixty-two can be heard in an open session. It's a recommendation from the city attorney to approve $580,000 settlement of case.
And this is an item we've already heard in closed session.
That's correct.
All right. Open the roll on item sixty-two. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with on that.
Item number sixty-three, do you wish to call that matter special?
Yeah, we're going to hold that till after we do the special meeting.
Items number sixty-four through sixty-six on the supplemental agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. There is an amended motion for number sixty-six. It is sixty-six A.
All right. I have no cards. I'm sorry. All right. Sixty-six called special. Ms. Goldberg, you're having an active day here today. You're all, all by yourself out there. All right. Now that we've got that clear, we're going to recess the regular meeting and call to order, I'm sorry. I was in such a hurry. On sixty-four and sixty-five, right? Okay. Open the roll on sixty...
I have sixty-five special.
All right. Mrs. Walters wants sixty-five special. All right. Sixty-four. Anybody for sixty-four? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. That's approved. Now, we'll recess the regular meeting and call to order the special meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Check. Fuhrer, Glaner, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Rely Thomas, Swanson, Wax, Walters, Faro, fourteen members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to move the communication from the Chair of the Commerce and Energy and Natural Resources Committee regarding item one on the special agenda today.
All right. It's my understanding that we need ten votes to consider, and you're moving that we consider it?
Yeah, I'm moving it.
Okay. All right. Mr. Padilla, did you want to talk on consideration, or you want to wait till we take the vote on whether they're considered?
I'll wait till we take the vote on it.
Okay. Open the roll on consideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. Now, Mr. Hernandez, you were up first, or is that what you wanted to do?
I just want to put it on the agenda, then I'll listen to the discussion.
Okay. Mr. Padilla.
Before beginning the debate, I just wanted to make a request. Item one on the special agenda is related to item sixty-three, I believe, on the regular agenda.
That's correct.
Regarding the sale of our interest in the Mojave power plant. The Mojave issue is an ordinance and requires twelve votes on the first reading, unanimous vote. Short of that, it rolls over for one week. So the request is this. We take up the Mojave issue first. If that does not pass today and it's held over for one week for a second reading, that item one on the special meeting agenda also be put over for one week to consider them both next week.
All right. Well, let me suggest that we have a presentation on item one. You have it in your power, as does any single council member here, to make sure that item sixty-three will go over for a week. All you have to do is withhold when it comes up. So you can be absolutely assured, since it's in your power to control that, that it will go over for a week. I'd like to suggest, and I'm open to hear from the rest of the council, that we have a presentation on the item that's part of the special meeting today. Whether or not we choose to vote on it is, of course, up to the council. But I think that it will probably expedite our voting next week, since I hear very clearly that we're not passing an ordinance unanimously today.
No.
That, I heard you, that we're going to wind up, it's an effort to avoid hearing it all again the other day. The concern, as we discussed in committee this morning, is that we are approaching the recess. The item the ordinance concerns has a September first deadline on it, which will occur during the recess. And the concern is to make sure that if we are going to carry something over for a week, that we indeed have a week while we still have the council in session for whatever, to arrive at whatever the outcome's going to be. So the question before all of you is, do you want to hear a report on the resources plan today? Or do you want to put that off?
Yeah. Madam Chair, that was my intent in making the motion for item one to be heard today. And hopefully, we'll take some kind of action on the special agenda item today, knowing that if it, there could be a continuance till next week.
Right.
But again, keeping in mind the timeframes, that's why I thought we had to do something with item one today, as well as we'll be taking that separate action with the regular agenda item.
Well, just to be formally correct about it, why don't you say we have a vote on whether to have the presentation now?
Okay.
So open the roll on, a yes vote is to hear a presentation on the plan now, and a no vote is to put it off. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. So we'll at least have a presentation, then we'll see how far we get with, excuse me, with respect to a vote on the resources plan. Mr. Freeman.
I'd agree to speak.
We also, well, I guess the people who've asked to speak want to speak on the other They may want to speak on this as well.
Madam Chair, members of the council, almost three years ago, y'all hired me to run the Department of Water and Power. At the time, the issue was, could we survive or not? We had a debt on our generating plants of over $4 billion, and there were issues about whether the power system should be turned over to a couple of folks called Louis Dreyfus and Duke. And there were serious questions as to whether we could make it. The council chose, not want to hire me, but to, they put their faith in the Department of Water and Power being able to become competitive. We, together, with your guidance, did not go down the deregulation path. We did not sell our power plants, and we did not open our markets. Working together, we have reduced that debt. We came before you, and you approved a plan to trim the workforce, which was a lot of agony and pain, but we went through it. And we are now in a situation where the cost of electricity in Los Angeles has been frozen and is staying frozen, and we can look forward to rate reductions in 2002 and 2003. And the reliability of the power system is excellent. We have brought back 960 megawatts, almost 1,000 megawatts, enough power to power a million homes in units that were laid up and were kind of tossed in the wastepaper basket in a sense, as far as generating electricity. So that we have enlarged the power system with our own workforce for less than $10 million. And it shows that civil servants and the people that we've hired are able to do the job. Now we face the future, and the one thing that we can't do is sit on a lead. We have a power system with thousands of megawatts of gas-fired plants here in the basin that are over 40 years old, that are inefficient and that are spewing out enormous volumes of oxides of nitrogen. It is time to begin the job of rebuilding our in-basin plants, expanding them, and having a power system with greater reliability and less pollution. In addition, the same workforce that's out there operating at about 20% of the time in these old plants are available to manage and operate the new plants that may operate a whole lot more of the time, so that the labor costs are very low in this expansion. We have laid that plan out after many months of thoughtful planning, and we present that to you. It is a plan to, over a 10-year period, repower 2,000 megawatts of the old, 40-year-old plants in this valley, in the basin, and also add 240 megawatts of simple combustion turbines that can be started and stopped with a push of a button, and plus, demand-side management in small power systems and renewables to the extent of enlarging our capacity by another 1,000 megawatts over the next 10 years. That is our basic plan. In order to finance with cash the first three years while we're still in this debt reduction mode, we are proposing the sale of a 300-megawatt plant out in Nevada that we consider surplus to our needs. We have 7,200 megawatts of capacity. Our loads have not, all summer long have not reached more than 5,100. We have been selling surplus power. This is a baseload coal-fired plant that has to operate around the clock, where we need units that can be started and stopped to meet the peak loads. And what our proposal is to literally take the money from the sale of that plant and use it to pay for, with cash, the beginning of our repowering and power additions in the LA Basin. The reason that this is important is that we need to continue to buy down the debt until 2003. By that time, we will have eliminated our debt, and we will be able to fund the rest of the expansion program with cash money. I think that the council should be reminded that when we first got here three years ago, we were paying over $400 million a year out of our rates for debt service. We had a huge debt. We have cut that more than in half, and we will eliminate that. That cash flow will enable us to reduce our rates. We're going to come to you with a 5% rate reduction as of January 1, 2002. That was in the original action plan that you approved right after I got here. But we are now able to tell you that we'll be able to have a further reduction of another 10% in 2003. We need the cash from the Mojave sale to finance the beginning of our expansion plan. And we also will be installing NOx control equipment, so that we will cut the oxides of nitrogen being emitted in half by 2002. We are, there's a lot of talk about we can't find turbines. Well, if this council will act with sufficient speed, I have a witness in the audience today from one of the manufacturers who will tell me that we can order and get delivered before next summer some combustion turbines, and we are working with the South Coast Air Quality District, whose concern about my plan right now is, can we speed up the repowering? Can we get the newer, cleaner equipment and plants in sooner? And I think that we can. We have a conservative timetable laid out for you. And frankly, we feel that we have come up with what the council has asked for, an integrated plan that puts together the financing with the construction and will enable this city to continue to have stable declining rates, an ample supply of electric power, and create jobs in this region. I've got 450 employees at these old plants that are concerned about whether their jobs will last or not, because the plants are older than they are. And I think that the employment opportunities -- and frankly, we are able now to be able to advertise that if you're fed up with electric rates elsewhere, move to LA and bring more jobs to this city. We are, I think, should be considered a source of pride and success in this city, and we come before you with this plan to continue the advance of progress.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have five council members with questions or statements. I know Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka have a slightly divergent point of view, and perhaps we want to hear from them as well. I also have -- we've tried to bring order out of chaos among the public speaking cards here, and we're combining this one with the cards that were received for item 63, so you don't have to fill out two cards. So we do also have a public hearing. Thus far, it appears that everybody who wishes to speak is in support. So if there's anybody who's not in support, please fill out a card, and we'll take you too. Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka, do you want to say something before we open the hearing? It wasn't you, Mr. Holden, it was them.
First off, I'd like to kind of separate the two issues, and I think the integrated--
I think that would be useful.
Yes. Integrated Resource Plan, essentially, we believe, at least I believe, that we should reinvest in the basin, in basin plants. I think it is a good idea for the long-term reliability of the electric system, and I am fully supportive of it. I think each plant needs to be looked at on the individual basis. We have basically four plants in the basin, one in the harbor area, one in the valley, one in El Segundo, and one in Seal Beach. And each need to be looked at very closely to decide which one to expand first and which ones to change. But I do believe that is an appropriate action. Our concern has to do with the sale of Mojave at this point, and we're concerned, I think in part because of the backdrop of the entire state-of-California situation. In fact, the -- and let me pause for a moment. I have said, and will continue to say, that I think Mr. Freeman and the Department of Water and Power has moved well in the last few years relative to reducing the debt and changing the character of the department in anticipation of competition that we thought we might have to face. And they have done a good job, an outstanding job, and I'm not trying to diminish that in any respect. I think at this juncture that this Mojave plant needs to be looked at with -- in the context of what's happening statewide. And if I might, San Diego Gas and Electric is the first utility in the state to be, if you will, under the new free competition in the electric industry, as anticipated by SB 1890, which was passed by the state governments, by the state some time ago. And what happens is that their -- all their generation, all the electricity is bought from outside of San Diego, the utilities control. And what has happened as a result of increasing natural gas, increase in the demand for electricity, and generally, people being able to buy up a lot of power plants, the cost of electricity, quite frankly, has skyrocketed in San Diego. And there is the looming threat that that could happen as well in the Southern California, Edison and PG&E service areas as well. 1890 provided, the state law provides, for municipal utilities to take 10 years in order to make this decision. And whereas the department has put us in a position where we could make a rational decision if we had to, it doesn't appear that, to most people in the state right now, that this competition situation has worked out. They -- two things have contributed to that, I believe. One is that the loss of control of the power plants to outside sources, and secondly, the inability to cite power plants in the state has been virtually zero, and there has been no progress. Therefore, demand has gone up, supply has not, and hence, the cost of electricity has gone up substantially. We'd like to see -- we have -- our general indication of this selling of Mojave does not seem to us to be a good deal. We are willing to be convinced, we do not see in this context of the state situation and the situation within the city, that it makes sense for us to do it now. It does not environmentally, we are under a -- an order to -- we are -- the plant is under an order to clean up the plant, notwithstanding who owns it. And no matter who owns it, whatever environmental problem will remain. This is basically an economic decision on the part of the city relative to when we should sell, or if we should sell. And I think that it deserves more analysis than it has got thus far.
My comments are basically -- excuse me, basically similar to Mr. Deaton's, but one thing I want to emphasize is our strong commitment to the -- to the Integrated Resource Plan, with the exception of the sale, but with particular emphasis on repowering the in-basin plants. We feel that's something that's absolutely needed for the city, and that should proceed on its separate course, and should proceed with some, I'd say, sense of urgency. The one thing that I wanted to emphasize is that, for our respective offices, you ask us to complete or to complete or do the due diligence necessary when a major project of this sort comes forward. We attempted to do that. We're asking for more time now, because the fact remains that we did not have complete access to all the information related to this sale until about two weeks ago. We had some preliminary information, but we did not have unfeathered access until the latter part of July. That's important. And a deal of this magnitude does not happen quickly. One thing we need to emphasize, regardless of whether or not it's this deal or -- but hopefully, in future deals, is that the department should bring in our respective offices at the earliest date possible, so that we can work together on this, and not towards the end, so that we don't have the time to do what you pay us to do, and that's the due diligence. The additional analysis necessary, well, I just think it's just necessary at this juncture. There are economic reasons, there are environmental reasons, AQMD reasons, and so on.
Can I sort of summarize?
Fine.
You want a delay, okay? Just make this fairly stark. You would like a delay. How much delay is it that you're asking for?
Well--
Either or, both of you.
We would report back in the first week of September, and council could consider it in the second week.
All right. And the concern that -- the reason that's an issue, ordinarily, the council would just say, fine, take your time. The reason that's an issue is that the offer to buy the plant on the -- that's in front of us, that the department has considered, has an expiration date on it of September 1st, just so everybody's up to speed on that.
Yeah, I know it's been represented as an absolute drop-dead date, but yet, at the same time, it's been represented that the -- because of the pure economics, this is a significant deal for both the department, the city, but also the company buying this plant.
For the company buying it, of course.
I would think that if -- that that time is not an absolute delay.
All right. Mr. Deaton, and then I'm going to come back to--
This is one last comment on the timetable. This still has to be approved by the PUC and by the Federal Energy Commission on the wholesale--
Our sale has to.
The wholesale. Basically, the Edison portion of it.
The Edison portion, yeah.
The Edison portion.
Okay.
Just one last comment on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
And not that I am -- and Senator Peace knows that I wouldn't normally quote him for a variety of reasons, but I do think it's interesting--
Just want to rub his nose in it.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I also would like to rub his nose in the fact that he'd like to do this to water, too. But nonetheless, that he was the author of this, and he is now sent to the Public Utilities Commission the following--
Steve Peace.
I also suggest that the commission temporarily withhold its approval of any further divestitures of electrical corporation generation assets until issues regarding the dysfunctionality of the wholesale electric market are resolved. Obviously, Mr. Peace has a problem, because he represents San Diego and was the author of 1890, and he's also suggesting, the commission, perhaps we need to think this out a little bit.
All right. I just wanted to -- I'll call on you in a second. I just want to try to make sure that everybody here understands what we're dealing with. The resources plan is a larger combined strategy that includes the repowering, the purchase of turbines, also includes the proposed sale of our 20% interest in the Mojave plant. The other 80%, is it 80%? No, how much does Edison own? They own a bunch of it.
50%.
50%. 50% of the interest in the Mojave plant. Edison has already agreed to sell, but that sale, because it's an investor-owned utility that's selling, has to be approved by the Public Utilities Commission. We don't come directly under the Public Utilities Commission, because this council was smart enough to insist that we not sell off the Department of the power side back when somebody proposed that. So the issue for us is, what Mr. Fujioka has raised, is that the Edison portion of the Mojave plant sale has to be approved by the PUC. So, Mr. Freeman, you might want to talk about what the PUC's decision, what effect the PUC's decision might have on us one way or another.
Let me just say a couple of things, if I may. The essence of the argument that I've read from the papers that the two eminent counselors to the council have made is, they question slightly whether this is surplus property, but then they quickly go to the point of saying that we ought not sell it, but we ought to speculate that we can get enough money by selling the electricity in the open market over the next five years to basically be the same amount of money that we are being offered. That is pure speculation. There is no one in this room that knows what the price of electricity is going to be two years from now. But I will say to you, as elected public officials, that you ought to take in consideration the fact that the governor of this state is up for reelection in 2002, that all the leaders of the state are saying that we're going to bring these prices under control, that there's a hearing on August the 10th that I've been specially invited to attend, because we're the one group that seems to be doing okay. And they are interested in rolling back these prices, and I don't want to recommend gambling to this council in terms of assuming that we're going to be able to get all this money for this Mojave power. And you should know that in 2005, all the contracts expire, including the contracts for the coal, and it is a great big question mark. I have 25 years of experience as the head of major public utilities, and over these years, I think you will see that fuel prices tend to go together, not in separate. If gas prices go up, those Native Americans that have a lock on the coal resource up there on the mesa are going to be demanding a good part of those economic rents. It is just -- it is just pure speculation to take the highest price that's ever been offered for a power plant in recent years, $850 a megawatt, where we can take that money and use it to pay for rebuilding our plants and turn it down. If this council wants to borrow money again for this power system, it's contrary to the action plan that I've been working real hard on the last three years to implement. We want to pay off this debt, not to go back to borrowing money, as Mr. Tuttle and others suggest.
All right. Let me, first of all, point out to the council members, you have a letter from Mr. Tuttle in which he urges caution about selling the plant, or that basically that we not do it at this time. You have a letter from Mr. Caruso, the outgoing president of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, arguing that we should do it. You have a letter from Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka, which basically says what they just said, and you have miscellaneous other communications. I do have seven of us so far, in addition to me, who want to say something. We do have a number of people who want to be heard. Well, the question is, do you want to hear from Mr. Tuttle before you hear from the public? Do you want to all ask, hear from each other before you hear from the public? Or would you like to hear from the public first?
[inaudible]
All right. Mr. Tuttle. And we do all have your letter.
I think the council president summed it up. I'm urging caution. Essentially, I see us in a situation where we have a situation where we could potentially regret someday that we have unloaded a secure source of energy, albeit one which is going to cost us some money to fix up environmentally, and to an effect, in terms of this in-basin matter, to bet on the come, to bet that we're going to be able to get the appropriate permits, that we'll be able to move this process forward to meet our needs. And what particularly throws us into relief is to what's going on in San Diego, and to some extent, reflecting very large forces at work in terms of the overall economy of the state. The world of dot-com requiring more electric power, for example, the great heat in the Southwest, the problems with -- and we'll go on and on and on, the problems with deregulation. This cries out for very careful review and analysis. Based on what I know now, I'm opposed to this. My opposition to selling the Mojave power plant right now in no way diminishes my support for dealing with the in-basin issues. In addition to that, on the strict environmental issue, whether we own Mojave or someone else owns Mojave, it clearly needs to be straightened out and cleaned up. It'll get down to the question of who pays for it. And I have serious concerns about it. At the very least, I hope you would take the time to have more thorough analysis done by Oars and by the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. This is a big decision. As I understand the numbers, it's essentially, I'll conclude by making this point, essentially it's a little over 4% of your energy resources, and it's a little under 25% of the reserve margin you have. We heard Mr. Freeman's numbers earlier in terms of the total megawatts the city owns, the 7,200 number, and the fact that we're in the 5,100 usage range at the highest point. So we have the numbers. We're also aware of what's going on out there in the world in terms of what the risks are, and we might regret someday getting rid of this secure source of power. I'm worried about it. Wanted to share this with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. All right. We're now going to open the public hearing. I think several of these people may have had to leave. Jack, excuse me, Jack Kaiser. Mr. Kaiser appeared in the committee this morning and spoke in favor of the proposal, including the sale. Miguel Contreras was here earlier. Had to leave? Okay. Also in support, Todd Campbell, Coalition for Clean Air, followed by Brian Darcy. Is Mr. Campbell still here? Let me just tell you, so you can position yourselves, Mr. Darcy, then Jim Stewart, Carolyn -- I can't read it. Kasdan, Sharon Romano, Diego de la Garza, and there's some more after that. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Todd Campbell. I'm the Policy Director for the Coalition for Clean Air, and I hold a letter before me representing a wide variety or range of community, environmental, and public health groups, from the California League Conservation Voters, the Communities for Better Environment, to the Natural Resources Defense Council, and the Physicians for Social Responsibility, emphasizing our support, our strong support, for the plan and also for the sale of Mojave. Why don't I take each issue separately? We strongly support the sale of Mojave, because this plant is nationally recognized as a polluting source, a significant polluting source that is polluting the airways of Nevada, the Grand Canyon, and local indigenous peoples around the production of the facility. Further, it divests the city from coal, or further divests it from coal, and puts that money back into green power and energy efficient programs, as well as repowering power plants that are in our communities. The environmental community is very concerned about in-basin generation of power if nothing is done to mitigate the existing pollution today. Selling the Mojave power plant allows us to reduce, to improve these facilities by doing not only repowers, but also, a commitment said today by David Freeman, with putting on the best available control-- on the best available control technologies to reduce and minimize any impacts that maybe, may come from these local power plants. My fear, and I think the community's fear is, if we don't do these sorts of retrofits, if we do not do repowers, and given the energy crisis that we are facing in the state, which I do not believe is just an outlier, I think it's a sign of the times, these communities in-basin are going to have to face power plants being shut, turned on without proper mitigation, without the best available control technology, and we have a GM that's willing to do it under the IRP. I also want to say that I question the power concerns that are raised by Mr. Deaton, as looked at the table here on page 12. According to this, our demand in 2010 will be 6,370 megawatts. However, our power or resources is 6,820. With the loss of Mojave, that means we'd have 6,500 megawatts or 200 megawatts above what we would expect we'd need for demand in 2010. For public health reasons, for local pollution, I, we support this plan. It gets us to where we want to go and invests in green power, energy efficiency. We urge the council for an I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Darcy.
My name is Brian Darcy. I'm the Business Manager of IBW Local 18. I'm also the treasurer of the California Coalition of Utility Employees that has spent the last five years lobbying, appearing before, and dealing with every regulatory and legislative issue regarding deregulation. I thought this was a no-brainer, but apparently, I must have woke up on the wrong day. Mr. Deaton talks about Mr. Peace, who we met with yesterday. We were in Sacramento trying to read the tea leaves. First of all, he misquotes Mr. Peace. What he's talking about is the sale of the hydro in California, not by any means the Mojave sale. And secondly, I was somewhat astonished by Mr. Tuttle's remarks about capacity, because I've visited most of the council members in this office over the years, starting with exposing the debt, which required us to file a lawsuit in 1993, to uncover the $8 billion worth of debt. It's not $4 billion. We've managed to dilute it. It's $4 billion on generation and another $4 billion of off-balance-sheet debt on other issues, such as transmission, that no one's even begun to talk about, because the FERC has it right now. So, we've been involved in this, and I've lobbied to keep the in-basin plants operating. Mr. Freeman rightly brags that we actually added 900 megawatts in the last year. So, when you start talking about capacity, let's remember that the Mojave sale is about a 20 percent ownership in a disaster that only outputs, on a good day, 300 megawatts. Every single person that I talked to over the last seven years on this issue has argued that we had too much capacity. And now we're sitting here on 7,000 megawatts on a 5,000-megawatt load, and we're saying, "Oh, disaster, chicken little, the sky is falling." Well, the reason that you have it is because we were successful in lobbying you to continue to keep those plants and to reinvest. So, there are two issues, and it is desperately important for you to reinvest in the basin. Whether or not you sell Mojave, that's a matter of conscience, because I think that economically Mojave doesn't make sense. I've been in every hearing that's taken place in the last five years, and Mr. Deaton is wrong if he's betting that it's a five-year window. It's a two-year window. And Mr. Freeman refers to the governor's race in 2002. Well, under the existing law, March 2nd or April 1st, there's a 30-day window. All of this comes to a head. That was the target date, and guess what, folks? That's three months before the governor's election. The PUC, on the issue that Mr. Deaton referred to, the PUC didn't act. It gave a $100 million rebate to San Diego. That's all it did. And in the larger scheme of things, that's nothing. They are taking a very slow look at this, and they're not rushing to judgment. And if anybody thinks they're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater, you better think again. I watched it up close and personal for five years. It isn't going to happen. I told them it wasn't going to work. It didn't work. It wasn't that difficult to figure out. It's Economics 101. There's not enough supply and a whole lot of demand, and the demand is growing. And this is a no-brainer. It gives you the money, and it makes sure that the jobs that are in the basin, this doesn't add any jobs for IBW, just makes sure that my members don't take the hit again. Because in the last six years, I've lost 2,000 members, and it's about time to take a stand.
Jim Stewart. Followed by Carolyn Casaban.
I'm Jim Stewart, Organizing Director of Earth Day, Los Angeles. We involved hundreds of local environmental and social justice organizations in support of clean energy, with over 15,000 people showing up in Exposition Park on Earth Day this last April, and we thank many of you, members of the council, for your support of Earth Day. And we are really pleased to be here in solidarity with labor and the environment in support of a fantastic proposal, to really do what needs to be done. Get out of this dirty Mojave power and get into the clean natural gas power that we know how to do in this basin. I also have here a letter from over 30 local community groups, from the Centro Latino de Educación Popular, to the Watts Labor Community Action Center, to the San Fernando Valley Boys and Girls Clubs, et cetera, et cetera, all in favor of this proposal. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Casaban, followed by Sharon Romano, followed by Diego de la Garza, and a few more. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Carolyn Casaban, and I'm here today representing VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I'm the co-chair of the Environment, Infrastructure, and Water Committee. VICA supports the DWP 2000 Integrated Resource Plan. It's good for business. The resource plan increases power capacity, flexibility, and reliability, which is critical to existing and growing businesses in the San Fernando Valley and the entire city of Los Angeles. It is good for the local economy. The resource plan calls for the reinvestment of significant funds in the rebuilding of local infrastructure. It is good for the environment. Old generating stations will be replaced with new units utilizing clean fuels and modern control technology, which will reduce emissions from the plant by 65 percent over the next 10 years. We urge the council to vote yes for the adoption of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Romano, followed by Diego de la Garza, Andrea Van Hook, Julie Masters, and Julia Russell. Go ahead.
Good morning. I've been before council a number of times over the last several years, expressing my concern about how the city views and protects its natural resources, and links those natural resources and the protection and investment of them to social justice and our economy and our future. Over the last month, we've been able to read almost daily in the Los Angeles Times, the luxurious position this city is now in because of DWP. I'm sure we're all very grateful for and very impressed by the work that's been done by David Freeman and his staff. The proposal that they've put before you in the resources plan, including the sale of the Mojave, I believe is a win-win-win situation, winning economically and not taking risks in the future, winning in terms of protecting our resources and making sure we pay just rates over the coming years, and making sure we have energy, and winning from a social justice perspective. This city hopefully is moving forward to the place where we link protecting the environment and how we produce our energy with human rights. This city council has a number of times taken courageous stands in the interest of ethics and moral decisions to protect human rights. And I believe selling the Mojave and supporting this plan is a part of that moral integrity. So, I view supporting this plan as, by the city council, as making good economic sense and demonstrating real environmental and human rights leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. de la Garza.
Good afternoon. My name is Diego de la Garza, and I'm here today representing the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, which strongly supports the Los Angeles Department Water and Powers 2000 Integrated Resource Plan. The chamber supports the proposal to sell DWP's interest in the Mojave generating facility and to use the proceeds to help repower and modernize in-basin facilities. The chamber supports the repowering, as it outlines comprehensive plan to provide electricity services to the businesses and residents of the city. Reliable electricity at stable competitive prices is vital to the community vitality in this region. This plan also will guarantee lower prices for its customers, and the chamber and its members strongly urge a yes vote for this plan.
Thank you. Andrea Van Hook.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Van Hook, and I'm here on behalf of our volunteers at the American Lung Association of Los Angeles County. It's a real pleasure to be here today to support DWP's 2000 Integrated Resource Plan. Usually, we have to convince people to spend a lot of money out of the goodness of their hearts to do the right thing, and today, all we have to do is convince you to sell a dirty coal-burning power plant. Divesting from coal-burning power is exactly like divesting from the tobacco industry. The city of Los Angeles would be sending a strong message that they will no longer be a part of the death, disease, and human suffering, as well as the environmental damage caused by coal-burning power. Coal-burning power plants emit large levels of all kinds of pollution. In particular, they emit SOOT, or particulate matter pollution, which we now know is very damaging to human health. 40,000 people die prematurely of particulate matter pollution in the U.S. It is also a major contributor to ozone, which is responsible for approximately 6 million asthma attacks in the United States. Los Angeles can divest itself of this dirty power plant now, before having to pay the necessary and mandatory $75 million in environmental upgrades. There should be no concern whether the new owner is going to make the necessary improvements or not. It's part of the lawsuit settlement. Meanwhile, this money can be spent here at home, cleaning up our own power plants, particularly the Valley Power Plant. So, divestment, in our view, is not only the right thing to do, it turns out it's the fiscally responsible thing to do. We urge you not to be swayed by fear, considering the current electricity market. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Masters.
My name is Julie Masters. I'm an attorney with the Natural Resources Defense Council. Thank you for this opportunity to comment today. I'm here to urge you to support DWP's Integrated Resource Plan, including the sale of the Mojave power plant. This plan represents an incredible opportunity for LA to build its image as a leader in clean power, and at the same time, to get itself out of the business of running one of the most polluting coal-burning plants in the United States, which is partly responsible for causing the smog which plagues the Grand Canyon today. LA needs the proceeds from the sale of the Mojave plant to clean up very old, inefficient, and highly polluting plants in our own basin, and that's what DWP's plan promises to do. The necessary upgrades to these facility will mean substantial reductions in smog-forming NOx throughout LA's, throughout LA power plants. A NOx reduction is not just an environmental issue, it's also a public health issue. NOx emissions are known to cause respiratory diseases and has been linked to an increase in asthma attacks in children. According to DWP, the city, if the city does not sell the Mojave plant, it is likely that we will not have the necessary cash available to begin the upgrades needed to clean up the plant in our own basin. Instead, we'll have to purchase NOx credits at soaring prices and incur unnecessary debt just to keep these polluting and highly inefficient plants in operation. The fact is, we're reaching crisis levels right now throughout the state in energy supply, and energy needs and uses, usage are only increasing. We do not, however, need Mojave as a cushion. We don't use most of the power we own from Mojave, and existing plants currently can handle LA's electrical load. Instead, the city should look forward and use the money from the sale to update our in-basin plants and increase their efficiency to meet our growing energy needs, while at the same time, protecting our air by decreasing their dangerous emissions. We also support the DW plan because it promises to meet about half of the future increases in our energy needs through energy efficiency program and increased use of renewable, pollution-free energy sources. This will decrease our future need to use in-basin power plants, and we very much support this part of the plan. We ask you to approve the sale of the Mojave today, but we ask for a one-week extension on a decision on the plan as a whole, in order to allow the AQMD the time to further assess the in-basin environmental impacts of this entire plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julia Russell is the last speaker. Julia Russell, are you here? Okay. In that case, the public hearing is closed, and what we, what we have before us, basically, is a whole bunch of council members that want to talk. I know you guys all want to talk again. Let's let the council members ask questions or say what they have to say, and we'll give you a chance to wrap it up. But we have four eight so far. And just so everybody's clear, we are in a special meeting. The item before us in the special meeting is the Integrated Plan. It does include the proposed sale of Mojave, but even if we, as I understand it, even if we were to adopt the plan, which includes that as a part of the plan, it doesn't sell the plant. In order to sell the plant, we would have to go back into the regular meeting, take up Item 63, and that would have to pass, and that's the one that requires an ordinance so that any single council member withholding would kick that over, even if it gets a majority of votes today. Is that, everybody clear on that? All right. So, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Burnson was first.
Now, now.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah, members of the council, let me, I've given some thought to this, and I've been, through the years, involved with the efforts of the department to provide adequate service for the city of Los Angeles. And let me tell you that I have the greatest respect for Mr. Freeman, for Mr. Freeman and what he's done since he's been here. I think that he's giving us a, his vision of what we need to do for the future. I also said, also want to comment that I think Brian Darcy also told us how it really is, as part of the package. Brian, you were absolutely on target. So, the problem isn't over yet, as far as financially, but Mr. Freeman has certainly shown a lot of leadership with the cooperation of the unions and so forth, in trying to solve the problem of getting the city in responsible financial condition. And I have great respect for what he's done in his vision and his record. I also want to point out to all of you that the future regarding coal generation, as well as diesel and other fuels that are polluting, is limited. Its days are numbered, not just in Los Angeles, but hopefully throughout the country and throughout the world. So, we need to look at all of these factors as we look at this. Now, I'm aware of the fact, as has been pointed out, that there is a difference between the cost of generation of Mojave and what it would cost to generate in the basin here currently. Now, I think we need to weigh all of these things. Obviously, there's not going to be a unanimous vote today. Hopefully, there will be on the 2000 measure, but not necessarily on the Mojave thing. I think we need to move forward on the 2000 vision, plan. I think that we need to take, I know that, I know you say there's an urgency on the price, David, and I respect that, but I would, I think we have to give the naysayers an opportunity to crunch the numbers so we can weigh all the perspectives, because I don't think there's going to be votes today. At least, there's going to be at least one no, and that's going to automatically carry it over a week, and even then, we're looking at council recess next week. So, hopefully, we can get all this information before September, if we can, Mr. Deaton. But there is going to be a little cost factor and difference of power production in the interim, but I think it's in the interim and not in the long run. I don't think it's going to cost us twice, $25, as opposed to $50, when the revamping is done of generation inside the basin of the when the revamping is done of generation inside the basin, of the restructuring of the new plants. So, I think those things all need to be weighed. I predict that one of the two great mis, shall we say, I don't want to use the word lies, because it's a little broad, but we remember the statement, "Read my lips." Well, the only thing that tops that, as far as being incorrect, is the statement that deregulation is going to help the public, and we all know that that's not true, right? And people in San Diego can attest to that, and if we hadn't done such a good job with some leadership we've had by our department, by Mr. Freeman, and with the help of the unions that are involved in that, we probably would, might be in the same condition as San Diego, needing to purchase power.
No, 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 no. We did that. We, the council did that.
We, the council.
We saved them.
Well, all right, I stand.
Okay, but your time is, no, really, we did.
I was just being modest, Ruth. I was just being modest, you know.
They did a great job, but we, in fact, refused to let the mayor sell the power plant.
I'll be happy, I'll be happy to give you some credit too, okay? Give our council credit too.
All right. But you have to, you have to stop now and give them some time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members here, and Mr. Burnson is right on. Mr. Freeman, you've done a good job, but I've said that. But let me tell you, for the environmentalists who said, "Don't sell this plant," that's not a good statement, if you care about cleaning up the air. The fact of the matter is, if you own a portion of it, you can have some influence about when it gets done. You shake your head if you want, but that's my decision, I do vote. The fact of the matter is that you can have some influence about cleaning, if you sell it, then of course, they're going to keep polluting anyway, and nothing will be done, except you'll be bringing money here, more jobs perhaps, but you're going to cut down on your power source. If you have an excess in power, you can sell it, which will have the consumer here in our area, and that you're not talking about. I'm saying that what was attempted to do, and Mr. Burnson mentioned that, was to deregulate here in the cities of Los Angeles also, was to sell DWP. We fought it, we prevailed, thank God. San Diego didn't fight it. Today, as we speak, the legislature is reconsidering deregulation. In fact, they introduced a legislation for the purpose of freezing the rate, the increases for power, and rolling back the rates to nineteen ninety-nine, so that's what I've heard. In fact, they are born again as well. A little late for San Diego, but nevertheless, they're born again. There was some interest in selling DWP, like it or not, that's what they were trying to do, and ram it down our throats to the consumers. I'm saying to you that Mojave does it, plant are not going to go away. If you sell it, they're going to continue to pollute. Whatever influence you can have, you can have some. You talk about, nothing can be done, but in Pennsylvania, they had coal stacks. Pittsburgh was the dirtiest city in the U.S. in nine. They've remedied the situation, it's the cleanest. It depends on have, what, do you have a commitment to do that? If the commitment is there. And I'm saying to you that you can have some influence, if you're committed, to clean up that plant, but selling it, in my view, is out of the question. I won't vote for it today, or tomorrow, because if it generates more power, for, and we can, if we have more than we need, we can sell it, it'll benefit the consumers of this area, and keep the rates down. That's what I'm concerned about. They are paying too much, and these schemes that we come up with will cause them to pay even more. Everybody's got their own bone to pick. Some wants more job, more development, that's fine, but the consumer's got to pay for that.
Now we want more time.
And you can, I'll punch, then I'll punch my button again.
By all means. Ms. Goldberg.
Yeah, I did make a couple of phone calls to some folks that I am working with in Sacramento, just to see what their take was on this, and how they were looking at it, and I shared it with Mr. Padilla, but I'll share it with you as well. It actually was alluded to already by several other people. Their, their view was, is that the price of, of, the cost of megawatts and kilowatts is going to become, in some fashion, regulated before the next statewide election, because of the political nature of the problems that are being raised. I didn't ask their advice, but, but I extrapolated from what they said, that if we are interested in getting the most that we can get from this power plant, that the, probably the best time to do that is right now, and not after there's regulation, which reduces the cost of megawatts by regulation. This is beyond my area of expertise. I've read all the documents from Mr. Deaton, and Mr. Fujioka, I read Mr. Freeman's materials, and I, I, you know, I have a hard time deciding whether I have enough information to make any decisions, but because the decision is ours, just let me share how I'm thinking about this. How I'm thinking about this is, is that the arguments that somehow or another, this plant will stop polluting if we sell it, are probably not true, because the new people will buy it, and they'll continue to pollute, unless the federal government, or the state government there, will tell them that they have to stop, in which case, they have to stop. So I, I don't have much interest in that issue. I have interest in the environment, but I don't think that we're going to be the deciding factor. I do think, however, that there are times to sell, and there are times to keep, and I think this is a time to sell. And the reason I think there is times to sell and times to keep, is because there are politics involved in all of this, and the politics are not going to keep the price of megawatts high. They're just not going, there's too much political stuff at stake. And already, just from the couple of calls I made to people that I'm quite comfortable with in Sacramento, I'm, I'm absolutely convinced there's going to be politics in the next year or eighteen months. That's why I'm leaning towards saying, I think we should sell this thing, buy down our debt to the extent we can, put whatever we can into regeneration, in, in, generation in the basin, not just for jobs, although I support the jobs, but because I don't think this artificial little bump in the price, caused by, I agree with many of the people who've spoken, by the manipulation of the market, is going to be allowed to last, because there's too much politics at stake. So that's just why I came down where I am. I'd love to tell you that I have scientific reasons for this, but I read all the science, and I don't understand half of it. And I would be lying to you if I said I did, but I do understand the politics of it, and that's the decision that I'm going to suggest.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, we heard this in Commerce Committee this morning, and I raised a couple of questions that I would like to articulate to the full council here at this time, and those questions were the following, that in order to eventually have my vote, I would want to ensure that the price of power to Los Angeles consumers, both now and in the foreseeable future, would not increase due to the sale of Mojave. They may increase due to other factors, but we wouldn't want the sell, the sale of five percent of our generating capacity to have caused that, and based of what I've heard by some of the speakers, Mr. RC, and, and Mr. Freeman, and some of the others, that that possibly would not, if not indeed, be the case. I think we need to look at this from, from a couple of different ways, the way other folks are looking at it. As I see it, we have the environmental community that most certainly would like to see this aged, cold-burning plant cleaned up, in one fashion or another. If we decide not to sell the asset, we'll have to clean it up. If the person who we sell it to, they're eventually going to have to clean it up. And so from the environmental community, I think they would not only like to see that plant cleaned up, but they would like to see it, upgrade our plants with the money that we have from the sale, in order to do that, and, and those are very meritorious positions to have. In addition, I would think that our local labor, IBW, would like to see as many jobs preserved in the basin as possible. If we could grow those jobs, all the better. I don't believe zero, or maybe just a few, are in Mojave, probably none, and so, from, from labor's perspective, I'm sure that they would like to either maintain what they have, or grow the workforce, which is also meritorious. And then also, I see from the CLA and the CAO's perspective, as well as Mr. Freeman's, that we want to make sure that we protect the rates that we currently have in the city of Los Angeles, which are among the best in the state. They're extremely competitive, and we want to be able to protect the consumer. I don't know if we can do all that today, but we need to do it in order to obtain the best price, according to Mr. Freeman, by September first. According to Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka, that's not necessarily the case, the September first drop-dead date not necessarily is what should be driving this issue. And so, the questions that I do have for the three gentlemen, and, and again, any time that you have, four people who I, I trust their opinions, Mr. Tuttle, and Mr. Fujioka, and Mr. Deaton, and Mr. Freeman, coming up with different answers to the question, it gives me cause to, to exert caution, and to pause, because I respect all of their, all of their positions.
And now that your time is up, did you have some specific questions?
The one question that I have, and thank you, Madam Chair, the one question that I do have for each of the individuals is, what guarantee can you give this council that the sale of Mojave will not either now, or in the foreseeable future, cause rates to rise to consumers in the city of Los Angeles? Mr. Freeman, you can start.
I guess, Mr. Freeman, that's probably yours.
Well, I can guarantee you that if I get two-hundred-and-sixty-five billion dollars of coal cash into this system, the return on that money is in lower rates to the consumer. If I don't get that cash, I've got to borrow that money, and the debt service on that money is about twenty-five million dollars a year. Now, the rest of it is pure speculation. Mr. Deaton can say, "We can sell the output of the power for five years at high prices, and get more money, and reduce the rates even more," and I can say, "That's a riverboat gamble," that I don't think that, I want to recommend to this council, and I don't think it's a gamble that you should take, because the political tea leaves suggest that those prices will not stay high for five years, and you cannot, right now, get a five-year contract at five cents. It was offered to San Diego, but they haven't accepted it. The price out there in the marketplace, which is now sky-high, and which is the basis for the offer we have, is at four cents. Now, it's just a, a matter of whether you want to take a bird in hand, or go on a wild goose chase.
All right. Mr. Deaton?
Well, needless to say, I'm not suggesting a wild goose chase, nor speculation, and I object to that characterization. The fact of the matter is, that we have, we are in the process of changing the policy of the city on energy. We have, up to this point, been paying down the debt, in an effort to be competitive, to a lower rate, to a lower cost of electricity, and in fact, what we have decided, or in the process of deciding, adopting this Integrated Resource Plan, in fact, the price of electricity is going to be higher. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this, we would be continuing to buy down the debt, and trying to be competitive, and, and at one point, the, the fact is that we anticipated the cost of electricity to be in the neighborhood of two-point-three to two-point-four, two-point-five. Now, we're talking about four. The fact, the, the, and we, there is politics involved in this process, and they, and, yes, there is. Lo and behold. There was politics that got us into this jam, and there'll be politics trying to get us out of the jam. But the problem with the politics is that the economics is in the way. Part of eighteen ninety was that you sold off the assets. You sold off your generating stations. When the generating, you can regulate the company that's going to buy Mojave, but the fact of the matter is, they're going to spend one-point-three billion dollars, if we sell them, to get that. I don't care how you regulate it, you've got to return investment. The cost of electricity, because of buying those generating plants, the cost of the gas, the natural gas has gone up, and the demand continues to go up. If, if by a law, you can create more power plants in this state overnight, you will have more supply, and you will have less cost. It is a simple demand and supply issue. I am not suggesting any speculation. The handwriting is on the, on the ground, this, this, the politics of eighteen ninety have created a situation in which we will have higher rates. We are acknowledging that, when we go to the Integrated Resource Plan, because we have acknowledged that we can, in fact, repower our existing plants, and do them for something like thirty-five dollars a megawatt hour, improve both our financials, and improve our environment by doing it, but we're assuming that the price will remain, so that does, in fact, become economical.
Okay. Mr. Fuhr.
Mr. Fujioka, Mr. Freeman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else want to?
Well, we have a financial model that is quite accurate, and quite conservative, that shows that we can reduce the electric rates, January one, two thousand and two, five percent, and another ten percent reduction, and we have sufficient cash flow to continue to pay the city a hundred-and-fourteen million dollars a year, and not let it go down to five percent, and have about a hundred-and-fifty million dollars a year cash flow to fund this expansion plan with cash money. We have a plan to put this, to keep this city in the catbird seat, and to be able to have electric rates that are lower than anyone else's, and to reduce the existing level of rates. Now, those are the facts out there, and they're there.
Part of the problem, I think, everyone is having, as we look at San Diego, San Diego did not have a municipal utility, like we have. They bought from SDG&E, right?
Yes, SDG&E are the utilities down there, and for those that have followed this industry carefully, like myself, they have a policy of not owning a lot of power plants way back yonder. They have been, they sort of unilaterally disarmed a long time ago, and they've played the market game, and they lost big time.
Okay. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. At the outset, I'm going to move that we continue the special item for a week, so that it keeps up with what is going to, in practical effect, be the continuation of the Mojave sale item. So we'll hear both again on Tuesday, and hope there's a second to do that. And now let me talk about what I think about the issues. The decision whether to sell Mojave is, I think, principally an economic decision. The decision, what we do with the proceeds of that, or in the alternative, what we do with bond-funded proceeds, has, has a lot to do with the environment. But I think the two should be dealt with in the, in that manner, because I think it, it's been said before, and it's accurate, that when we sell the plant, if we choose to do it, someone else is going to operate until they're told they can't operate anymore, or until economically they can't afford to operate anymore. So it's not as though, in the global scheme of things, there'll be one fewer coal-fired plant out there. I think that we can all agree about that. The economic issues, I think, look like this, and it's been, I'm going to sort of summarize what I've heard so far, because I think it's basically right, that were we to sell the plant and get the cash, we have two-sixty-five on the table, which is by no means sufficient to fund our ten-year plan, but it gets us off to a good start. The alternative proposal recognizes the necessity of the redoing of our local plants in the basin, and argues that, from an economic standpoint, we can do better by continuing the sale of coals, the coal-fired energies we have been, and, which is more than sufficient, if everything remains the same, to fund the debt that we can anticipate in lieu of the cash. I do think that the latter approach, the bond-funded approach, first of all, is generally different from, from mine, and from those councils, where we choose to fund things with cash, at least to the extent we can, and it does assume, I think, a continued coal contract as it is, and it does assume that there isn't a meaningful change in rate regulation. It has to assume those things. I, I am not prepared to assume those things at this moment. Let me shift gears for a second. Assuming we sell the plant, what do we do with the proceeds? That's the reason why I think we should continue the Integrated Plan, because I think there does need to be a more detailed and effective conversation about the environmental mitigations associated with having our in-basin plants pour out more, like, generate more electricity, because we know that we have problems currently with those plants. We have, at least implicitly, although the council's never had a debate about this, chosen not to fund environmental fixes to the output from those plants at the moment, so they are, in fact, dirtier than they should be, and I think we need to have some very specific commitments with what we would do with those proceeds, that have these environmental implications in the next week, because if we don't, then I think we are relegating the communities in which those plants are located, and indeed, the entire basin, to a level of pollution that's unacceptable. So that, I think, is a piece which has to be taken into account, which is why I'm suggesting the continuance. I also think that in the next week, if there's further financial data that differs from the analysis that I just put on the table, for example, which is reflective of what's on, what's been presented, then I want to hear it. But someone has to convince me that there is more likelihood than not, that the coal contract we have is going to be continued, that environmental regulations aren't going to get stiffer on the coal-fired plants. to get stiffer on the coal-fired plants, another issue we haven't discussed very much, and that the state isn't going to regulate rates in such a way to make our current benefit from using that plant diminish. Mr. Freeman, if you wanted to say something?
Yes, I want to say to you that I'm in complete accord with the suggestion that we identify in greater detail the equipment that we're going to put on immediately on these in-basin plants to reduce the pollution in 2001 and in 2002.
And the speed of that redoing.
Yeah, and I've been in almost continuous conversations with Mr. Wallerstein, and I think with another week's time, for the information of the council. We have, and our commission has approved the purchase of an SCR for one of the units. We have an RFP ready to go for the rest of them. We have not been indifferent to this concern, and with the cooperation, we can speed up the timetable and be sure of the permitting, and assure the people of Los Angeles that we are going to reduce the pollution, not way down the road, but starting next year and the year after, because these units reduce the pollution to down to below 10 parts per million. The existing plant spews out 125 parts per million. But I want to say to you that when we went to put in this SCR, we found that the prior management had jumped an order for one. The foundations were there, and we didn't have to build new foundations. There had been a policy back there of trying to just basically phase out the in-basin plants, which would have been disastrous from a reliability point of view, and I think would leave us without proper power supply. We welcome the opportunity to provide you, within the next week, the details in cooperation with South Coast, and I feel confident on the conversations I've had with Mr. Wallerstein, he's going to be here supporting what we're proposing.
All right, Mr. Fuhr, your time is up. Mr. Wax?
A week would be fine to get more information. Let me give some thoughts. First of all, I have problems with the process we've gone through. I always have problems when we know so very little in a given so little time to deal with such a big and major issue. And you've been working on this a long time now, and it should have been before us a lot quicker than before a deadline, and to go start hiring, and I always get leery of a process that sits down and hires lobbyists and everything, and tries to figure out how to get different council members' votes to come up to eight at the last minute. That process always worries me. It happens all the time, and it's happened here and now. That said, there's a long history, and nobody has shared the history of this utility more than I have, and been a longtime critic of it, and there are some realities here, and the realities are that at least past department management, and past union leadership, and past CAOs, and past CLAs, got us into one great big mess. And to his credit, Mr. Freeman has helped get us out of it. And he's had a little bit of help. And ironically, while the others are suffering from deregulation, we benefited from it, because it was the threat of deregulation that caused us to go out finally and bring in Barrington Wellesley, and benchmark this department, and find our weaknesses, and bring about the restructuring that has created the kind of savings that is getting this department out of a mess. So, there's an irony to this. That never would have happened were it not for the threat of deregulation. This city has had a history of its department resisting to the core anybody who came in and said that you were bloated, anybody who came in and said you were inefficient, "Don't tell us, we know best, we're the best," and Councilman Bernardi, Councilman Bernson, and I have harped on that forever. And finally, the threat of deregulation brought about this council's willingness, and a few muffins, brought about this council's willingness to get an independent outside audit, to bring in Barrington Wellesley, to benchmark the department, and to bring about some changes. Now, as you know, I think that the cost of those changes was about $400 million more than it should be, but I think that the reality is, is that I have a lot of respect for what you have done to save the day for this. My hunch, however, is that I'm seeing a scenario come about whereby today, we may, or in a week from now, sell our interest in Mojave, aided by a number of people in the environmental community, and then, when we come down to it, we're not going to be able to restart the three in-basin plants led by the opposition from many of the people in the environmental community. Let me ask you, Mr. Freeman, a specific question. If it got to a situation where we could not restart our three in-basin plants, would you still recommend our sale of interest in Mojave, and why, or why not?
Well, we're operating.
Don't say you're going to get it. Let's just take the assumption that something will come up and you'll not be able to do it, the second part of it. Would you still go ahead with the sale of Mojave?
Yes, sir. We would be acquiring, peaking power, and power more suited to our loads than the Mojave plant, and we can take the money from the sale of Mojave and acquire the capacity either in this basin or somewhere else that will give us the electricity. We need electricity when it gets real hot in the summer time.
Have you provided the kind of economic analysis that that scenario, I would like to see that between now and next week, what the option would be, because it's not hard for me to figure out that that could easily happen. It's not hard for me to see that you're going to have more trouble than you envisioned in getting the vote to go ahead, in getting the approval to go ahead with restarting the three plants here in the basin. And what I would like to see is your, is your option in that case, your option in, if we sell our interest in Mojave and that were to occur, I'd like someone to spell out for me just where we would be and how you would, how you would suggest we proceed, because that, for all, for a lot of other reasons, is not a far-fetched possibility. I've just been here long enough to, it doesn't take a Ouija board to figure out that that's one of the things that could happen. So, could you provide for us a sort of a more detailed scenario of where you would be if you ever got into that situation?
Yes, the lowest-cost way to replace Mojave, and quite frankly, sir, is to put the money into incentives for people to buy more efficient refrigerators, more efficient air conditioners, more efficient equipment.
That you should do anyway.
Well, that would be, that would be my option.
No, that's, we should all do, because everyone, yeah.
Well, we're not doing it anyway, because we don't have that much money to put into it. If we want to keep the rates to the consumers and bring them down, the difference between bringing in $260 billion of cash money and borrowing it is fundamental.
Okay. All right, I would just ask you to, I'm going to finish, just ask you that in this next week to prepare that sort of third scenario.
Yes, sir.
Let me just say, I think you might be right about the resistance to the power plants. You need to make the environmentalists who support this agree to help you on the power plants. Mrs. Chick?
I bet you don't have a key word.
Ms. Chick?
Thank you. Well, I seconded Mr. Fuhr's motion to hold off until next week, and I'm not sure that I'm willing to wait any longer than that, and I certainly think we should try to make the decision on Mojave. And I think we're faced with a difficult decision, colleagues, and that's obvious from many of the comments that have been made already. When we have our experts in energy, and I have to say that we are all aware, the track record is very good, and at this point in time, to have the general manager of our Department of Water and Power come in and advise us, this is the way to go, when we know his advice has been good in the past, I take that advice very seriously, and am now faced with the difficulty that advice from other highly respected city advisors, our fiscal advisors, our city controller, our CAO, and our chief legislative analyst carry a lot of weight, too. And that's why I'm hoping, between now and next Tuesday, that some of the key questions and missing information can come forward. I'd like to add to the mix, and I don't know if the answers can be given today or part of the discussion for next week, but the following questions that I feel I haven't heard enough about. There's been discussion about how the sale of Mojave will deliver cleaner air in the basin, will be a cleaner solution, and I'd really like to hear more about how that is the case, because it doesn't quite seem that that is accurate. Two, I'd like to hear more about what is required to get the permits that we would need if we do sell Mojave, or I suppose we're going to need them even if we don't, to develop more capacity in basin. I'd also like to hear more about how power prices will be reduced to the consumer by 5% by 2002 in selling Mojave. And then, finally, there's been some discussion, not here today, but that the value of Mojave to us is going to be reduced over time, partly because there are new power plants in California that are coming online, and I'd like to hear if that's an accurate concern as well. So, I think, one, two, three, four, five. And if some could be addressed right now, that's great.
Well, it is a fact that there are a large number of power plants that are being built. Frankly, the 5% rate reduction was something that was committed to in the action plan that the council adopted over two years ago, and we will make that reduction whether or not Mojave is sold. I want to be candid about that. The permits, you're right, will be needed in any event, but quite frankly, and this is fundamental, we are going to reduce the pollution compared to what's going on today in repowering these plants. We're going to put in units that have less than 10 parts per million of oxides of nitrogen for plants that are doing 125 now. So, even if we operate the new plants virtually around the clock, the total pollution will be less, but from an air pollution point of view, and Mr. Bernson and others that have dealt with this extensively, understand that it's the hot day of the year when the most problem occurs, and on the hot day of the year, we're running the existing plants, the new ones will have a tiny fraction of the pollution of the old ones. So, this is a program to clean up the air in LA, but frankly, that's independent of the sale of Mojave. The sale of Mojave is to get the money to pay for all this rather than borrowing it.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez?
Members of the council, again, and I was listening to the debate, I listened very carefully when Mr. Deaton said something to the effect of he can be convinced, but I think it's Mr. Deaton's job to convince us, because we're going to be the policymakers in this regard. And I think that we already made a policy statement in this regard at least three years ago, when we basically dealt with the reorganization plan. And when I say that, is clearly we were dealing with deregulation, and we agreed that we needed to reduce the debt as much as possible, and that part of that debt was because of the financing of the generating system that we had throughout the system. Now, I kind of want to bring that out, because what this is about is competition of utilities, and what is the role of a municipal utility in a deregulated environment? Being able to participate in the discussion at a national level, and being able to hear the discussion at a state level, there's clearly no question in my mind that people are looking at California, and in particular, Los Angeles, as to how we've been dealing and addressing with deregulation. And so, it's paramount that we keep in mind the reduction of the debt, and we don't lose that perspective. From my perspective, you need to understand that this plan that we're going to approve today, and everybody agrees should be approved, except for Mojave, is important. Now, I also believe that we should sell the Mojave coal mine plant. I believe that. I believe it on a variety of principles, one being environmental, another one being, if I'm going to invest money into generating additional energy, I would rather invest it into the basin as opposed to outside of the basin. I'm just trying to explain it, because I think that's the direction that we have to go as a municipal utility. Now, let's understand in this deregulated environment where our current utility lies, and that is, we're leading the rest of the state. For people to believe that San Diego is not a true picture, for people to believe that what happened to San Diego is not a true picture. I honestly think that deregulation is going to continue. I think that the legislature is going to try somehow to deal with capping the rates, because that's going to be their political survival, because they initiated this process. I've seen it before with deregulation of other utilities, when I worked for the phone company, and that was part of my role, and I also know the role of competition. I think the game plan of working of our in-basin generating plants basically will solidify the strength of our department in being able to provide our energy needs. The other day, my staff told me we had a brownout in Mount Washington, that we actually had a utility shortage, and I told my staff member that wasn't true. And he said, "Why?" And I said, "Because my power went out. I heard an explosion, my power was out, my wife was concerned because she was ironing. She came back, and she says, 'What do I do?'" I said, "Wait." The power went back on before the iron got cold. The reality is, the system was working, and we had one of the transformers blow out. Los Angeles is not having a power shortage today, when everybody else is. We are being able to meet our needs, and I don't think it's because of Mojave that we're meeting those needs. So, again, it's classified as surplus. I think it goes in the direction of reducing our debt and allowing us to reinvest in the basin. Environmentally, I think it's more conscious, and I basically support both plans before us, and that is, the overall plan as well as the sale of the Mojave plant. Now, I kind of want to bring it up, because I've been thinking this thing through, not just for the last two weeks, but basically, the last three years, and there's no question in my mind that we're ahead of many other municipal utilities because of the plan that we've been following.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you very much, Madam President. If it hasn't been done so already formally, to second Councilmember Fuhr's motion to delay this item for one week so it can be considered, along with the second reading of the Mojave sale ordinance. You know, there's a lot of questions, a lot of issues that have been raised in Mojave and the plan, because they're interrelated, not the least of which is, you know, is this the best deal we can get from a cost-effectiveness or a cost-analysis standpoint for the city? There's certainly environmental issues that have brought a lot of people out here to stake their views. Mojave's not exactly a feather in the cap of anybody when it comes to environmental concerns. Councilmembers of Orange raise a very good question, which is, the bottom line for our constituents, the bottom line for DWP customers, what's this going to do to our rates? Is there a threat that rates will increase? Are we comfortable that rates will stay the same? Is there a possibility that rates will decrease? And you're answering those questions. But among the global and city-wide considerations that we all have to take into account, I also have to take into account, just like Councilmember Savornic, what it means for our constituents from an environmental standpoint, because these facilities are often located in communities that tend to be poor, communities of color, and communities that are also subject to other environmental concerns, if not hazardous facilities, like landfills, like oil pipelines. And so, it's very appropriate for us to raise the questions and to beg the answers for the environmental safety of these facilities, both in the short term and the long term. The department is making the presentation as one of, we want to clean up the air, we want to upgrade the facilities, and I want to believe you. I, like Councilmember Savornic, trust you, but show me. I want to see the report, I want to see the study, I want to see the emission control model that is being utilized, both in the short term and the long term. I do believe that in the course of a couple of years, we can upgrade the facility and run it cleaner, but what does it mean when we run a cleaner facility 12 months ahead of the year as opposed to three months ahead of the year, like we're currently doing in Sun Valley? I want to know that. And also, in between now and that upgrade, how can I have assurances that we're not going to crank up the old facility for a couple of years while we invest in the new facility, which will take, I understand, about four years on an aggressive timeline? I want to have those safeguards, and also have assurance that the costs are going to be covered, because from a policy perspective, it may make sense, from a social and environmental standpoint, it may make sense, but if we can't pay for it, it's all for naught. I understand the deal is $190 million out of selling our interest in Mojave. What are the costs for upgrading the in-basin facilities, and if there's a gap, how are we going to close that gap?
May I respond? All of those questions, you know, are answered, and we will supply you documentation within, during this next week that we will have to kind of seal the deal, in a sense. Let me make two points. One, there is just no question that the equipment that will be put on these new units will control the oxides of nitrogen down to a level one-tenth of what those existing old units control, and even if they're operated around the clock, which they won't be, the total pollution will be lower, and you have my word that we're going to do a mitigation plan under your leadership that will make that site a beauty spot. It's an eyesore now, it's an embarrassment. I agree with you. Now, I would like the council members to consider
Now, I would like the council members to consider this question because I think it's the business way to look at this. If I came to you today with a proposition that we should spend $265 million to buy a 20% interest in a plant in Nevada with borrowed money, would you seriously consider it? I think if the answer is no, then you, by logic, must vote for the sale of Mojave.
Thank you. Mr. Deaton, thank you, Councilman.
It may be illogical, but I would have recommended against buying such a thing, and I am not recommending at this stage to sell. There are different questions.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I think we should step back a little bit. And I appreciate the debate and the questions. It's fascinating to me that an issue of this magnitude and seriousness, and something that in another context, we might spend months, weeks, months, maybe even a year in delaying, deliberating, considering. Given the questions around the table, I presume and perceive that the council gets it. The questions are appropriate and right on, and it shows that we can act appropriately and quickly when it's necessary. And I think the week's delay is going to give us that further assurance. But I think if we stand back just a bit, we've got a rather phenomenal issue in front of us. First of all, we have this plan, which for the first time truly says that the three main objectives of the department are reliable service to the customers, competitive price, and environmental leadership. For those who followed this particular institution for a couple of decades, we have pushed in the past to make environmental leadership, an environmental element, a part of this department. And I think this is not lip service. This is absolute, and I think the department's to be commended for that. I think we also have to look at the brief but interesting public hearing we just had. We had members of labor. We had members of environmental organization. We had members of business organizations. All say we support this. We had actually organizations here who normally come before us and speak about economic justice issues. They spoke in favor of this. This is a rather phenomenal time, and I think Ms. Goldberg also pointed out, it may be fortuitous in terms of our ability to sell this asset, sell it now at its highest value when there are so many other uncertainties out there. So the economic reality is also of benefit at this time. I think the questions that have been raised are legitimate. I don't think it's going to be harmful to delay this one week. But Mr. Waxman, you indicated that there might be some of those environmental organizations today which they do this, which may say when we repower the plants, don't. Read their letter. It says, "Under this plan, DWP will use the proceeds from the sale of Mojave to repower the aging in-basin power plants, increase their productivity, efficiency, and reliability, while at the same time significantly reducing their smog-forming emissions and therefore improve the air quality here in L.A." Well, we can't hold them that forever.
No, Cindy, I didn't necessarily mean the same environmental.
But these are 10 of the most prominent environmental organizations, which I think coming together in a coalition to recommend this in letter, in writing, is something that although we won't be able to hold them to absolutely, does tell us that their version of studying this has come to the same conclusion that Mr. Freeman is giving us. And I think it is a rather phenomenal opportunity, a phenomenal time, to bring that consensus of labor, environment, business, and economic justice organizations saying this is a good plan.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter.
I actually have a lot to say about this, but I'm going to skip most of it since it seems pretty clear that this is going to come back in a week. But I do think we ought to remember a couple of things here. First of all, why did the Edison Company decide to sell its 50% share of Mojave? Edison is the one that's having trouble providing to its consumers. They obviously thought it was a good deal. They're required by deregulation to divest themselves of some of their generation, but not of all their generation. So I'm not privy to why Edison decided to do this, but Edison, remember, the Edison executives report to the Edison shareholders, not to the Edison customers. And the shareholders, whose interest is in making money rather than providing electricity, felt that selling their share of the Mojave plant was going to make money for the shareholders. So that suggests to me that there's some bunch of people out there, and you know what Edison executives get paid? They get paid a lot more than Mr. Freeman does, that there are people out there who think selling Mojave on this offer is a, which is the same offer that's been made to us, is a good deal. Now, let's just not forget that as we go ahead with this. It is certainly true that the Mojave plant is going to continue to either get cleaned up or not get cleaned up, whether we own 20% or not. At 20%, we don't have a whole lot of influence on the decisions that are made by the majority interest operator there. And we won't if we retain it. We'll just pay our share of it as we go forward. But I also want to say, I think the Mojave plant is a real embarrassment to the city of Los Angeles because we, as you know, still have the dirtiest air in the country despite all of the fabulous things we have done and the progress we have made to clean it up. And the way we helped to clean it up historically is that we moved our pollution somewhere else. And so we are in fact, we have historically, unless we adopt this plan, we've closed down our in-basin plants, which were a problem. They were a serious source of serious pollution. And we've said, "We'll just get our electricity by polluting somebody else's air." We do that with every out-of-state facility that we've got. And some are cleaner than others. The Intermountain Power Project is the cleanest fronting coal plant in the country, probably. You can't find dust when you go there. Mojave cannot make this claim. Mojave is a very dirty place, and it has been for many, many years. And I frankly think that if there is any way for us to provide for our own needs, to provide for the security of the department's future, and the department's ability to provide for our needs, that does not require us to stink up somebody else's air in order to save some of our own, that we ought to take it. And with all due respect to the very legitimate concerns Mr. Padilla and others have raised about the repowering in the basin, that's what the AQMD is for. What we're hearing from the AQMD is that they want to help us do this right and do it quickly. And if that's the case, this is a little unusual for the AQMD, it seems to me we ought to take advantage of it while they're still interested in doing that. So I would urge that, you know, I want to show everybody their proper respect for the need for additional information. I think Mr. Wax's concerns that you can't get a power plant permit overnight are certainly true, and those ought to, but I have every confidence that the department has actually looked at the fact that they have to get permits for these things. And it seems to me that holding off is not going to bring us the information we don't already have, except that the whims of the market and the whims of Sacramento and Washington will have had another week or however long it takes to do their thing, all of which will change the week following because this is a very volatile situation. One thing we know is going to change is that after September 1st, this offer is not to buy, is not on the table. So if we want to buy at the same price that Edison is getting for its share, we have no reason to think the PUC is going to turn this down, nor do we have any reason to think they're going to approve it. It's not our problem whether they approve it or not. Our problem is that we have an offer on the table now, and if we want to make that money, we ought to take the offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
I heard another thing in this discussion today, not whether we should sell the plant or not, but you're ignoring the persons under fixed income. And when you liquidate, you produce less power. You generate less power, which means that eventually the rates are going to go up here, my friends. Now, you say Edison is selling part of Mojave. Are we, do we have coal burning plants in Arizona? Do we have coal burning plants in Utah? Are you talking about closing those? You're not. You know what's going to happen? The rate's going to go up. You're not cleaning up the world, although we should do the best we can to do that. Now, they don't tell you that they sold $35 million of power to Edison last week. Did I hear that incorrectly? $35 million to Edison. That's Edison just selling part of Mojave. That doesn't sound like a good economic deal to me. Now, if this, if we're generating that kind of surplus energy, our stranded debt, which is only $50 million according to Mr. Freeman, you told me it was $50 million on that plant, our 20% on that plant site. That's what you told me.
The investment in Mojave is $50 million.
You said in Mojave, $50 million stranded debt, although we have more than that.
But we're not making that kind of money out of Mojave, sir.
You're not listening, my friend. You just don't skew the issue. You told me out of your mouth that you had a $50 million stranded debt on the Mojave Desert Plant. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, fine. We just made $35 million when we sold the energy to Edison.
We have not sold power to Edison. Let's get a few things straight here.
We'll hold my time, then.
The total net profits that we made from all of the sale of our surplus power, mostly to the independent system operator, in the month of July was $35 million. As far as I know, we did not make any sales directly to the Edison Company.
So you made $35 million. That is great. You know what? Because we have a surplus. Like Ms. Goldberg said, and I've said earlier on, if you're going to close down the Mojave plant altogether, even if you sold it so it's not producing, then you're cleaning up the air, but they're going to produce more. So you're not saving anything. You come here with the idea, sell your share of Mojave Desert, and the pollution will go away. Not so. Under the guise of cleaning up the air, you're going to raise your rates to the consumers here in the city of Los Angeles. That's the end result. That's all you care about because you can't afford to pay. You can pay your utility rates. You've got your increase to $135 million, $135,000 a year. On this deregulation in Sacramento, this whole issue, like the fishing one, this is the one that the FBI should have been looking at. It did not serve the best interests of the consumers in the state of California. Why? It was considered in the first place and ramrodded through the legislature. And now, the fallout is, let's reconsider. The FBI ought to be there on this issue to find who's been carrying the bag of the water for the individuals who thought they could make some dough out of it.
All right. Mr. Holden's time is up. Mr. Tuttle wants to make a comment, and then I have two more council members.
Thank you. This is simply a question, and it's informed in part by Councilman Wax's question, the one you asked about 15, 20 minutes ago. By the way, let me start by expressing my admiration, Dave, for the job you've been doing as head of the department. Over to the generation resources diagram, which is over by Councilman Holden's left shoulder. I look at the, in the year 2003 and the year 2004, it's a dark, I'll describe it as purple. And that suggests new units. And I had a conversation five minutes ago with Frank Salas and asked Frank, "Is that the in-basin new units we're talking about?" And the answer was yes. The green thing is self-evident. That's the savings with green power. And the, we notice the, it's almost a red line. We notice the line of the demand, the net peak demand, moving up, up, up gradually so that we hit, do we not, the 6,000 megawatts on the backside of the year 2003. Taking Mr. Wax's question, this Councilman Wax's question, if we don't get the in-basin by 2003, which is X number of months from now, through the appropriate processes, is it not the case, based on this chart, and I'm willing to allow on green, on the green part, that we're basically at a 7,000, 6,000? I'm talking the back end of 2003. And are we not informed by, on page four of your integrated resources plan, and you've laid it out, I think with great detail, aren't we informed by the reserve requirement which we have as a public utility that is not part of the ISO, of an 1,100 megawatt? So my question, and I realize I'm looking at a fairly crude document in the sense that I'm not looking at numbers, I'm looking at a chart, but it's informed by the numbers. But are we not, and this is really more a question for next week. I'm, you may want to come right now, but I'm certainly willing to wait. But this informs part of my concern from about an hour ago. This is a substantial part of it. And that, and I'll add one other point, Madam Chair, members of the council. It's not just the technicalities of the reserve requirement, it's the reality of the reserve requirement that we're seeing around the Southwest right now, why it's important to us. I don't need to get into scenarios of what could happen here, or what could happen there where we may need it. It is a concern, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. All right.
Could I just say one?
Do you feel a need to say something? Go ahead.
It is this utility's management pursuant to a council directive to come up with an integrated resource plan that is laying the reality on the table, sir. If we do nothing, the loads will grow and we will have power shortages. We are laying out a plan for expanding our power supply that needs to be implemented. And I think that I'll be able to come back here next week with the head of the air quality district, which is the only outfit that we need to get permits from, shoulder to shoulder to show you that we have worked real hard, not only to bring 900 megawatts back on the line that we're laying idle and have them operating, but to make this expansion. There is nobody in this town that is more responsible for the adequacy of power supply than me, and I would not make this suggestion that we sell Mojave if there was any question about the reliability of power supply. We have got to take the 2,000 megawatts of in-basin power that is going to die on us, sir, if we don't repower them. We are in real trouble if we don't go ahead with the program.
All right. Wait, wait, wait. I see a debate shaping up at the front table. I have two more council members who want to be heard, so I'm going to call on the council members. And let me remind you that we have a motion on the floor to continue this for one week with the understanding that that will put it on the same track as the ordinance. And I'm going to assume that that therefore means we have a commitment to take a preliminary vote on the ordinance today, and if it does not pass, then it will go over for a week. Okay. Because we are still in the special meeting. Mr. Ridley Thomas has the floor for the first time. He's yielding to Mr. Savornic, so I suspect I know what this means. Mr. Savornic, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. To continuing the series of questions, the problem that I have is that if there is a delay or denial of any of the permits in regards to the $260 million, I guess the term would be, Mr. Freeman, retrofits of our existing plants by 2003, if we do not meet that deadline, and of course, no decision maker sitting around here, except maybe for two or three, will be here, the rest of us will all be gone, including maybe the CLA, maybe the CEO, maybe you yourself. I mean, that's three years down the line. All the folks who are here today who are going to be making the decisions, we would have made the decision today and not be accountable three years from now. But if any, if there's any chance between now and 2003 that the permits aren't issued or they're delayed, we could have a price increase, could we not?
I don't know that we will have a price increase. We're going to have a price decrease. We have cut our costs.
But the question, I know that you are committed to a price decrease by 2002 of 5%, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But again, the question being is, is if we sell Mojave and we can't use the $260 million to upgrade our existing facilities because there's a denial or delay in permitting to do so, will Los Angeles consumers face a rate increase? I'm sure that was your senior consultant, Mr. Holden, speaking for you.
I don't think so, but I really don't think that the, let me finish if I may. We have a information from a major manufacturer that we can have 240 megawatts of additional capacity installed by next summer, which largely offsets Mojave. If we can get some approvals, and they will have NOx boxes on them so that the emissions will be very low, and I'm very confident that we can get, work out with South Coast to get those approvals in place. We do not have to go to the California Energy Commission because we can repower these plants under existing law. We have thought through the timetable, and they're very conservative.
Okay. The clock is running. So the answer is, Mr. Freeman, is that you believe that if we are not able to get the permits on time, we still won't face a price increase?
That's right. They'll be delayed maybe six months or a year, but it will not cause a price increase.
Okay. Finally, the way that the plant is operating now, what is the amount of profit that we are currently generating off of Mojave, provided that the market stays stable?
Well, we do not sell Mojave into the marketplace. It's part of our mix, and we're still on a cost-to-service basis so that the cost of electricity to us remains stable and our prices remain stable. We are not playing the deregulated market. We are not playing the deregulated market. We just take some surplus, which we have, on a daily basis when it's cool here and hot everywhere else, and that's usually the gas-fired plants. What is not sufficiently understood by my colleagues is that a coal-fired plant is not something you can turn on and off. It's not, it's not the source of power that we can use to market. When they call us in the morning, they say we need some power this afternoon.
And I guess in closing, Madam President, I guess I want to believe, Mr. Freeman, because he's an expert in this market. But when I have the CLA, the CEO, and the city controller saying, proceed with caution, as I said in committee, there was an old statesman for a long time ago who was a Secretary of State, who said, trust but verify. And so I just want to make sure that the decision that we're making today doesn't haunt us tomorrow. And I think with the one week of continuance, or even if it runs into September, we don't do that, but I know that you have a time schedule that you need to meet.
Well, the council needs to know that if we do not accept this offer from Mojave, the new owners have a right of first refusal if we try to sell it to anyone else. And anyone that's ever tried to sell anything knows that someone else has a right of first refusal. You can't get much of a price.
Okay. Mr. Ridley Thomas. Why am I not surprised? There being no one else who wants to be heard, I will assume that to be a unanimous vote for Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion. Now, we have a motion to continue, and I assume we're going to let it be continued, and then we're going to recess this meeting and go back to regular meeting, take a first round vote on item 63, which is the related piece, which is an ordinance, and then, Ms. Goldberg, why are you back on this?
Just a point. I have an inferior question, because I'm not...
Okay.
Let's say we don't continue. Just so I understand, what would be the order of which votes would come up?
If we, if we were not to continue, if we were not to continue this item, we're in a special meeting now.
I understand that.
So procedurally, this is the only item on the agenda.
Right.
If we were to vote on this item, the integrated plan, now, we would, either way, we would recess, if we adopt it, it still doesn't adopt the ordinance that sells Mojave. That's a completely separate item. That's item 63 on the regular meeting.
I understand that. So if, if, since I didn't hear any opposition to the integrated plan, I'm wondering why we're continuing it.
Well, the reason, the reason we were asked to continue, Mr. Padilla was particularly concerned, and Mr. Fuhr agreed that this was legitimate reasoning, that if we adopted the plan, that we were implicitly adopting the repowering of the in-basin plants, which Mr. Padilla had some concerns about, I mean, we would be explicitly adopting that, and that we were also adopting, in principle, the selling of our 20% share of Mojave, which several other people have doubts about.
Okay. And the only other question I have of the chair is, we are going to have council meetings next week?
We are. However, let me just tell you what they look like, because, and you might as well all know this, on Tuesday of next week, a week from today, we have Ms. Goldberg leaving at 10:45 and four other people out. So that means that we have, assuming we start early, we actually have a meeting, but then we don't have a quorum after that.
No, we have 10.
We have 10.
We have 10.
We have 10. Right. Sorry. We have 10 when Ms. Goldberg leaves. On Wednesday, we have 10, and on Friday, we don't have a quorum, although Mr. Padilla has said if it's necessary, he will come in. So we are looking at having only 10 of us present unless some of those who have decided to be out are able to come in. The people who are excused all week are Mr. Padilla, Mr. Savornich, Mrs. Walters, who's a delegate to the convention, Mr. Ferraro, who you know is ill, Mr. Wax will be out on Wednesday, Mr. Burnson and Mr. Fuhr will be out on Friday. So does that answer everybody's questions? We have 10 on Monday, on Tuesday, we have 10 on Wednesday, and Friday is iffy. Okay? So the matter before us at this moment is whether to continue the item from the special meeting for one week. It'll appear on the regular agenda on Tuesday of next week. When we will have a bare quorum. Yes. Okay? All right. Open the roll on continuing. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay. That's continued. Now, we are therefore finished with the special meeting at 10 minutes to 2. We are now going to adjourn the special meeting and resume the regular meeting, taking up item number 63. And I'm going to incorporate, I hope this is agreeable to all of those who were here, the comments of those who spoke on the, in the special meeting on the integrated management plan, and since they also spoke to the ordinance, we'll assume all those people are also a part of the record on this item. So item 63, which is the ordinance that would approve the contract of sale, and it has a, has two related things. It has an easement, and it has some switching things. These are basically all the same pieces of the deal that are involved in the sale, in Edison's sale to AES. So the matter's before us. Open the roll.
I'd like to withhold, Madam President.
Yes, I know. Don't worry. If you just, if you either withhold or you don't, you want to just withhold and we just, it just goes over a week? Okay. Never mind. It just goes over a week. Next Tuesday, at some reasonable time of day, when there are at least 10 of us here, we will have both of these items before us. Okay. That's item 63. Mr. Hernandez has reminded me that we do have a special one before us, which is a request to take jurisdiction, so let's take up special one. Madam City Attorney, we need findings.
Cornfield.
Do we not, or don't we?
Yes. On the special. This item was, was heard earlier in July, it was heard late in July, and there's been some discussion about what the date was to Prop 5 it, or to 245 it, under the new charter. And the written decision came out on August 4th, and therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act. And I might also point out that since the council is in recess for the last two weeks of August, that you probably would need to take it up today so that it can then be considered and take your jurisdiction and then continue it to a date next week.
All right. So first, we'll vote on the findings. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Those are approved. Now, Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah. We've taken jurisdiction, and now I ask that we continue the item till next Tuesday.
You need to take another finding.
Now, we have to take another vote to assert jurisdiction, and then we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Now, that was the vote on the findings.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to open the roll on asserting jurisdiction. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay.
Silence, Ms. Holden. Okay. Now, I ask that we continue the item one week. And members of the council, this is all dealing with the issue of the cornfields. And it's the first time the City Area Planning Commission had reviewed a matter, and it's of major concern that mitigation measures be part of the proposed project. I think that the council needs to review the project. It wouldn't come before us unless we took jurisdiction. And because of the dates, right now, I'm asking for a one-week continuance so that we could continue discussions with the developer and at the same time, be able to bring something to you. I do not know what will happen as a result of those discussions, but I do know that we'll have 21 days in which to act, and by continuing it for a week, it'll give us at least till the week we come back after the break.
Okay. Ms. Mizinkowski.
If it was possible, and I'm not clear on the timing here, and that if we continue a week, do we still have the time after we come back? The concern I had was if we continued to a week from tomorrow, that it's Wednesday, then it could possibly be heard in Plumb next week and have the matter resolved before we go away, if there was a time restraint element. If we continue to just next week, we won't have had a chance to have a Plumb meeting on it and bring it back.
We were trying to count the dates, and we weren't sure if it would be heard. We're hoping that we can have something before Plumb, but we weren't sure if it would be next week or be the first week of September. And if we don't have a Plumb meeting, then it would be, hopefully be bringing some recommendations to the full council.
Mr. Fuhr.
My only question is whether we're making a decision on the merits next week. The answer is no, we'll be making a decision in September, so that's...
Okay. So we're all clear. So this is now going to be continued to next, Mike, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
That's August 15.
August 15. Okay. Thank you very much. That's that item. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we seem, I don't know if we've lost people, we have, we still have an agenda ahead of us here. Oh, yes. Hold on. We can, we can take care of a bunch of these very quickly. Item number one, we had called special because we had a card. The gentleman was in support, and he's gone. So there you go. Open the roll on item one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item one is approved. Fourth with on item one. Okay. Item five, let me tell you what else we have here. Item five, item nine, item 17 has two reports on the file. Item 18, I understand, Ms. Mizinkowski wanted to continue that? Yep.
Wanted to speak on the matter, and we might want to have a brief hearing to then continue it.
Well, okay. We have, now, my note here says a lot of them have left, but we'll see when we get the...
We're getting an indication of a waiver of hearing, I believe. So, but let me, let me indicate that this is the, on item 18 quickly, this is the ordinance on banning public urination and defecation. It has always been tied by the council in discussion of not doing this until we have something there in reserve.
I just want to know whether you're continuing it or not.
I am continuing it and continuing it until the time that we have the RFP back with ability to indicate. So it'll be about a year.
All right. So we need a year?
We will actually have the RFP back in November, so we can continue till November, or at least when we have the RFP back in November.
You're not chairing the meeting. All right. So we're going to continue that until, let's say, the first meeting in November, and then we'll, we'll deal with it after that. All right. Okay. So we've done item one. We have five, nine, 17. We've done 18, 23, 65, and 66. Okay. I just want you to know what's left here. All right. So the next item is...
Is item number five, an item notice for public hearing.
All right. And we do have, several people have asked to be heard on item number five, John Wilson, Thomas Flores, and Alden Moore. Is that you?
I'm John Wilson. Good afternoon, Madam President and members of council. I'm an attorney, and I represent Leona Davis, the owner of the home that was torn down at the city's order at 198, 198 West...
Pull the mic closer to your mouth.
Close.
Yeah. We can hear you better.
198 West 43rd Place in Los Angeles. I'm here today to protest and object to, protest and object to the cost of the asbestos abatement, cleaning, and demolition, fencing being levied against her property. There are three bases for this objection. For, she's, it's a financial hardship for her. She's permanently, that's permanently disabled. The charges are excessive, and Building and Safety Commission did not consider Ms. Davis's situation when it made its ruling to tear down her house. The fees are excessive, and that she was charged for fencing twice. Other charges appear to be duplicated. The asbestos abatement and removal, the asbestos was abated when the house was removed, so it was abated by a removal. There is insufficient data in the invoices that show these charges. It's impossible to tell if the charges are reasonable or not and how to protest them. And the destruction was excessive. It was beyond the scope of the asbestos abatement. The driveway, the foundation, and concrete structures were all destroyed as well. The second, the third, the third item, from the time that she received the original order to abate, she's made continual efforts to comply with the, with the order and resolve the problem. She retained two contractors, and she's had trouble making the contractors perform, and she's made numerous complaints to the commission and others in an effort to resolve this, and nothing was done. And this has since grown to litigation, and which the commission knew at the time when it denied her request for an extension last, last July, and it ordered her house, her house destroyed. The basis for denying the request for the extension last year was no basis at all. It was, request is not in conformity with the spirit and purpose of the code section involved, and there's no standard by which the review, the decision can be reviewed. The spirit and purpose should be to resolve these difficulties with the cooperation of the city and not as an adversary. As I said before, she's with limited means. She's hired two contractors and just depleted her funds, and to pay this now would, would be an additional hardship. And for these reasons, I ask that this assessment not be imposed on her. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Walters, this is in your district.
This is in my district. And until the time that it was demolished, it had been a headache, an excedrin 10 headache for three full years. Neighbors complained, our office complained, and we had no response whatsoever, as I recall. I'm going to ask Adrienne Harris, who's the building mechanical inspector, code enforcement unit, if she would give you some of the history of the building or her experience with the building.
The building was open, vacant, and vandalized for over five years. We spoke to the owner on at least 14 occasions, and each time she closed it up, each time it became open again. Dumpsters were dumped in the front yard, from the front yard all the way out to the sidewalk. We cleaned it twice. They kept breaking into the garage and the rear of the dwelling, and it was declared a public nuisance twice by the Board of Building and Safety Commission. There was a three-year period between the first declaration and the second declaration before we actually took action on it.
I think this demonstrates a long history that the neighborhood should not have had to tolerate, and I believe the action taken by Building and Safety was the appropriate and correct action to mitigate this problem. So I would urge a unanimous aye vote on this.
All right. Thank you. The public hearing is closed, and you have Mrs. Walters' motion before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Next item.
Item number nine is also an item notice for public hearing.
On item nine, we have Pauline Bias and Edward Greis, I understand, has left.
While they're coming forwards, items 17 and 66, I called special, and I've gotten the information I need, so I would ask that we move on them.
All right. In that case, hold on, Mrs. Bias, let us just take care of, stay, no, stay there, but let us just take care of items 17 and 66. Now, 17, there were two reports on file, so we need a...
I understand the Plumb Committee report is the appropriate.
Right. I move the Plumb Committee report.
Okay. All right. Everybody's in agreement. Open the roll on 17 and 66.
No, 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 not on 17.
All right, then.
17, you move, you move 17B? Okay, fine. Done.
Well, thank you. All right. Open the roll on 17, no, I didn't follow it either, on 17B and 66. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Okay. Now, we're back on item nine. Ms. Bias. Oh, yeah. On 66, there was an amending motion as announced previously. We'll assume that was incorporated. Thank you. Now.
I'm being charged for fencing.
Pull the microphone up right close to you, and let's make sure it's on. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm being charged for fencing, removing of graffiti, and I've never had a fence put up. The fence that's on my property have been there since 1990, and graffiti has never been removed from my property. And because of this problem that is existing, I really would like the help of Mr. Thomas, Ridley Thomas, to investigate this before it goes any farther, for his office to really look into this.
Thank you. That closes... No, we're not up to item 17 yet. Hold on. This is item nine. Just hang on for a second. Mr. Greist is, I think, not here any longer. All right, Mr. Greist is not here, so that closes the public hearing. We might as well have a staff report first, but it's my understanding that Mr. Wrigley Thomas, oh, he's back, okay, there you are. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, again. This property has been a nuisance for over twelve years. Apparently vagrants seem to know that it's in the neighborhood, and they open it, they close it. Ms. Foley will close it when we ask her to, but I'd say over forty-five times in the last twelve years, we've had to call her and ask her to close the property up and to clean and remove the debris. The fence that she's speaking of is not an entire fence. We sent a fence contractor to the property. He installed about eighteen posts to install a fence, but never completed the project because Ms. Foley would not allow him to. We are charging her for the posts alone and the services of the fence contractor.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have some council members that want to speak on this item. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters. No, your button was pushed. Okay, fine. Is there any council members that wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. The motion is to confirm the assessment. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved, fourth with. Next item.
Item twenty-three, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number twenty-three.
Yes, this is, I think, the first maybe, under the new charter section 1,001B, which seeks to exempt nine positions for the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment from civil service, to provide management services or to render professional, scientific, or expert services of an exceptional character. We've used that category, council members, primarily for professional experts. Often, they are people in the scientific or professional, people with professional degrees, or occasionally, we've used them for, in the past, for assistant general managers. The subsection of this that requires that when you do this, you have to explain why the circumstances, what the circumstances are, seeking the appointment that preclude filling the position through the civil service system. There was really nothing presented at the joint meeting, which explained why these could not be done. I asked a specific question. The answer was that they'd have to work nights and weekends. Well, we have a lot of people who have to work nights and weekends and, that are filled under civil service, so I, I'm not compelled by that answer. I personally don't think I'm ready to have the positions filled anyway, but that's not really what's before us, because it's in their budget and they have the right to do that. They don't need authorization. What's really before us is whether or not this should be done under civil service, or whether or not it should be done otherwise. And I would say that as to the senior management analyst, you could make the argument that at least it's a management position, and that that might need to be done as an exempt position. So I would urge that we accept the senior management analyst as an exempt position, but the project coordinators and the senior project coordinators, I really believe ought to be filled by civil service. We have, there...
Is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion. The requirements are that, for these jobs, is that you have either a bachelor's degree or community organizing experience. They do things like go door-to-door and help organize residents, all things you know. I put great store and value in, so it's, it's not a matter of valuing the position, but I can't believe that we couldn't find senior project coordinators and project coordinators willing and able and interested in doing this, understanding that there might be night and weekend work, who would apply for this. And I would urge that we, it takes ten votes, I would urge that we accept the senior management analyst position as a management or a professional or scientific expert, and that we deny the other eight and make them be civil service requirements.
Okay, I think procedurally, and someone will correct me if I'm wrong, procedurally, we would have to then disapprove the communication.
No, it comes, it comes without recommendation.
All right, somebody will help me with that when we get that far. Mr. Hernandez.
I just moved that, that, that's what we do.
Right, no, I got that, okay.
I raise the second motion made by Councilmember Goldberg, so that we have something before us. And I just wanted to ask the department head, this council took a previous action where we asked you to put together an advisory board, made up of primarily organizers, and we also wanted to participate in that process. Where is that?
The first meeting was held last Friday.
And who is on that advisory board?
I apologize, I don't have the list in front of me, I'm not...
Okay.
Do you want me to call Mr. Burnson while you read that?
No, I, I just, I have some names I would like to include.
We'll be glad to take additional names from you.
And, you know, there are names like Victor Grego and David Trujillo, even Rita Moreno from my office. These are organizers, community-based organizers. And I saw your list, and I appreciate you inviting Bert Corona, but if you understand his health situation, you'd understand why he couldn't be there. And I'll be real honest with you, I don't want a setup committee, I want a real committee. And the reports we've been getting have not been very positive of that light, in terms of what you might, the direction you might be taking. And it's impacting, I'm being honest with you, it's impacting the credibility of the whole department, at least in my office.
Actually, we asked for all the recommendations from, from council members, and all the people were from each of you, so I'm happy to take more names.
And you'll get more from my office.
Thank you.
And we'll go from there.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with Mrs. Goldberg's motion, but my thoughts on this are slightly different. So Jackie, maybe you might want to hear what I have to say. This is a new experiment, as far as the city department is concerned. So there may be some time for a wiggle period where we find out, you know, once we, once we put people into the civil service system, they're there. And we have the ability to either endure with them, whether they're capable or not, or whether the system works or not, or else put them in some other position in the city where they may or may not fit also. So what I might, what I'll, I'm not going to make this as an amendment, but I'm going to make it a suggestion before we act on this. What if we had a period of, say, two years, where we did not have these as civil service positions? Well, don't say that. We could put it into an ordinance now to make it become civil service in two years. But it gives us a time, ability to adjust and make sure we have the right personnel to fit a new situation. So give that some thought, because I think it's, it's worthy, and I'm a very strong advocate of the civil service system, and that's one of the reasons I was opposed to some of the charter, the new charter amendments, the new charter that went into place, because how it dealt with civil service, and in some cases, how it didn't deal with civil service and give us the ability to, to make changes and release people that were not fitting into our system. So I'm not going to make this as an amendment, but I think that perhaps we ought to consider, I'd like to hear from, from Roz on this, as to what you think about whether you'd like a couple of years or some other council members, because we, we don't know who, you know, some of the people that are in this thing now may not work. And we'll have a couple of years to fine-tune this system before we lock in these positions to civil service.
Ms. Chick.
Oh, I wanted to hear the response. Oh. I'm, I'm happy to think about that. We have collaborated and consulted with the Personnel Department on the positions currently before you today, and I would like to think about that.
Yeah, well, I'm prepared to, to support my colleague's motion as well, in the absence of any discussion that it's causing problems. I think what's important is that the department has the staff that it needs, but I can, I could make arguments for why I don't think they should be civil service as well, including that I believe these are the people who are not only going to be helping to organize, but will be staffing neighborhood councils. Is that correct?
Possibly. I haven't submitted the next budget, so there may be additional people that would actually staff neighborhood councils once they're formed. I mean, this is in the process. Right now, these, these positions are needed to satisfy the aggressive timeline on organizing, getting the plan into council, and motivating communities to participate in this process currently. Yes, these, these employees will participate once neighborhood councils start to form, but will they be the key people?
That's unknown right now.
Unknown, there's going to be a lot more, I would imagine, maybe.
Well, then, that's almost, that's almost an argument to me why, why we should, for the moment, keep them civil service, civil service, no, not exempt, civil service, because if you're having a lot of other positions, I guess it's unclear to me why these need to be civil service. And my main thing is I want you to be able to go ahead and have the staff, which is included in Jackie's motion, so I'm going to go ahead with that.
Mr. Fuhr.
Are these resolution authorities or ongoing authorities?
They're in the budget, ongoing.
Help, under, help us understand your answer to the question Ms. Chick asked about what their functions could be down the road. Here's why. At the moment, we have a tremendous need to engage in outreach, to organize communities, to create neighborhood councils in the first place. And that's what these positions are for, correct?
Correct.
One hopes that in five, six, seven years, whatever the period of time is, that that will no longer be as necessary as other things for the department to perform. Because the initial organizing effort is just that, it's an initial organizing effort. Neighborhood councils in my district are created now, there's no need to organize them anymore, kind of something else. You answered Ms. Chick's question, would these people later be assigned to staff neighborhood councils with sort of an equivocal response? If their function is to be what it is defined as now, that's forever, that raises some questions. If the function is supposed to change, that raises other questions. And I'm actually asking a question about this fundamental issue, are they resolution or, or ongoing, because that might inform my judgment about their exemption. I thought, Laura, maybe where you were going to go is that if these people were to be assigned to staff neighborhood councils, you'd want to give the neighborhood council members themselves an opportunity to weigh in on whether they're good or not. And, which, I don't know if that's even, what, what role that takes in all this. So I just want to understand this system better. What roles are people playing, for how long are they playing them, and so forth?
Well, depending on the plan that's ultimately delivered and approved by council, we aren't going to know today, are you staffing neighborhood councils? We don't have an answer to that until the plan comes forward and we have, you as a group, take a look at...
People are done organizing, what are they going to do?
Well, I don't think done organizing, organizing is an infinite job. For the city of four million people, organizing neighborhood councils throughout the city is going to take many, many, many years. It's not, many years, I, Councilwoman Goldberg shaking her head, yes. It's a huge task. So I don't anticipate that individuals that I'm hiring today are ever going to not be needed to assist communities in organizing. The question of, will they literally staff neighborhood councils once they're, once they're organized and formed? I can't answer that today. It's dependent on the plan that comes forward and how that's shaped and structured. And I'm not sure if that answers your entire question.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg and Mr. Burnson both wish to be here.
I was just going to say, on procedure, the first vote would have to be, I've been advised by the city attorney's office...
Yes, I was too.
Oh, okay. That we have to have ten votes to, to not accept the mayor's recommendation, then it would take eight votes to make them civil service, with the exception of the senior management analyst.
Well, yeah, basically, it would be, in order to get to voting on your motion, if we wanted to approve your motion, which actually only takes eight votes, but in order to get there, we first have to have ten to disapprove the mayor's recommendation.
And I was going to actually say the same thing that Ms. Stewart just said about the organizing. No matter what happens, if you're going to get people who are not now connected to the city connected, there are going to be people who are going to be out there, going to be knocking on doors and doing this for a long time to come, which is precisely why I want them to be civil service. So I think we need to have people who know they are going to be permanent if they do a good job. You can evaluate and get rid of anybody who isn't, particularly during their probationary period, and that should be pretty easily obvious during that probationary period, whether you've got the right people or not.
Okay, Mr. Burnson.
Well, you know, you have a lot more confidence in the system than I do, Jackie, but because I, you know, I think that we have, we have some leeway here and opportunity with something that's new. And I think that, that we ought to, we ought to, we ought to go with the exemption at this point. I have no problem in the future, after we've determined whether we have the right people and the head of the department feels confident that the people that she has, not just doing the organizing, but doing the other activities, the staff things that are going to be required. And the council's comfortable with the way these things are working. I think that at that time, I would certainly support civil service at that time. But at this time, I feel that we ought to exempt these positions, and let's talk about, about civil service a little further in the future, after we've developed a program. We, we don't even have a program now. We don't know where this is going, and yet you're going to create positions that are going to be locked in forever. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going, I'm not going to vote to, to override to be one of the ten votes today. I think that's the best way to do it, but I will state for the record that I think in the future, after we've, we're satisfied with where we're going with this, that these positions should be like other departments, civil service. But today, I think we're still in the embryo stages.
Mr. Hernandez.
So my understanding is, because we have no recommendation from the committee report, the mayor's recommendation stands?
No, under the, no, no.
Right, I just want my turn.
Under the new charter...
Right.
The communication from the mayor stands unless ten of us vote to disapprove it. If ten of us vote to disapprove it, we then have the option to adopt Ms. Goldberg's motion, which approved, exempted the senior manager, but left the other positions in civil service.
So currently, does the senior, the department have, have civil service? No.
No.
Yes, the department has civil service. Civil service, of course. These are, we have both. These particular...
No, no, I think he was asking about you.
You. Right.
Right, that's what he was saying.
Personally?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to deal with Mr. Burnson's question, because if we're dealing with an institution of the city, someone has to have civil service in order to keep it going.
And we have that.
I mean, that's part of a process. And every other department, normally, the city employees are the ones with civil service, and the exempt positions are the ones in particular. Now, there's no question in my mind that this is a department that's here to stay. It's had some leadership problems. We've had a hard time keeping people at the top of the department on board, and I think that part of it has to do with the approach. I honestly believe that each and every one of us, in putting together field operations to get elected, have had to experience organizing in communities, whether it be house meetings or it be that kind of stuff. And it's a different kind of approach than the approach we might take in running our council field operations. But actually, organizing is a different approach, which is, I, I'm real concerned about this advisory committee and its role in being able to help the city organize a city towards community councils, because you've got to bring the best at doing that kind of work on board to become part of your extension of the work that you're doing. But I also believe that it's important that the city family, whose role it is to implement what this institution's supposed to do, has to have civil service, has to basically have a long-term institutional approach to making it happen. And again, in its infancy stages that we're dealing with right now, I just want to make that remark, because the reality is, the department head might not be here after this mayor's not here. And there is nobody as an assistant department head who might be here.
There actually is now.
What, how, how long?
She started Monday.
Right, okay, that's my point, because we, and she's not civil service either.
That's correct.
Okay, so again, that's why I want to kind of bring that argument about, because at least the base, the foundation, would have civil service.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Walters.
I have routinely voted against all positions that are coming through as exempt positions, because I have a real problem with exempt positions, and I don't know why nine positions would be exempt all of a sudden in one department, the department... would be exempt all of a sudden in one department, the departments all of a sudden. But yet, you want nine exempt positions. And I think it would have been very helpful if you had come with the names of people on the advisory committee. I believe that question had been asked before, and I don't think any of us have ever gotten a list of people that are on the advisory committee. Some of us have concerns about the neighborhood areas, and we certainly need the names of all of those people. But council members, I will be voting against this proposal to exempt nine positions.
Ms. Mizakowski.
I think there's been a lot of valid issues raised today. And it's interesting. Mr. Hernandez talked about running for office and having a different kind of field structure. And yet, it's interesting. I think the most comparable folks we have now in, who might fill this kind of position, are those in council offices. Our own field staffs now are the ones who are generally exempt, because most council offices have all exempt positions, and are the ones who go to the evening meetings and weekends and are expected to do this kind of work. I also think that Mr. Burnson is right, that we might look at a transition and/or a sunset of starting something exempt, but going to an institutionalized civil service. Because I really believe that you're also absolutely right, Mr. Hernandez, that these should be civil service, because they shouldn't always be exempt positions that are organized. We should institutionalize in our city, that city employees work evenings, and city employers react both to communities and departments at a time as convenient to the public. So I think we do need to institutionalize this. The thing that I'm concerned about, and I don't know whether or not the department has now project coordinators who are civil service, and what kind of ability have you had to fill those? If you have had reasonable ability, and we haven't even tried the civil service position, I would think that I would be inclined to go that way. If you have tried it and had trouble filling it, and say you need the exempt for a short term, just to get up and started and initiate it quickly, because that is also of concern, to get these positions and get that department as fully staffed as soon as possible, that would inform my decision as well. So can you tell us, do you have project coordinators now, and are they under civil service?
Yes, we currently have a senior project coordinator and three project coordinators, but they're all exempt positions, as was...
So your current ones are all exempt?
That's right. And that was authorized by council in February.
Okay. So you have not attempted to advertise or go out through a civil service procedure for the, those current positions, either current or the ones here?
Well, when we advertise, I'm not quite clear on, and personnel would have to give me some guidance here. It's when we advertise, we advertise everywhere that personnel normally advertise, specifically through the civil service process? I'm not sure.
But that they are exempt position as they come through the civil service process, at least for those that have been designated so far?
That's correct.
Well, members of the council, I would think that if we, and I don't know whether or not, there's an appropriate way to construct this, that if we support the communication for the mayor, but with a sunset clause, that it be no more than two years with Mr. Burnson's suggestion, a one-year review, something like that.
I don't think we can do that.
It's an all or nothing.
I think it's basically, it's all or not. If you want to change it in any ways, I understand it, what you have to do is vote, is vote to disapprove, and then come in with a motion, which is what Ms. Goldberg's motion does, or somebody could make a different motion.
Well, I would then recommend that we vote no on the recommendation, and if I can, at the same time, move in that motion that we substitute a, an exempt position for these positions for a two-year period sunset.
Okay. So let me, just so we're clear on the procedures here, what we would do is, the first vote we take, if we get that far, we have four people still to speak. The first vote we would take is on whether to, it would be a motion to disapprove the mayor's communication. Once that passes, we have Ms. Goldberg's motion, yours would be a substitute motion, and there might be other motions forthcoming as well. Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, I have had numerous conversations with Rosalind about the department and what its focus and orientation and goals are. And one of the things that I have shared with her is that during the charter reform debate, there were some individuals, specifically, I think, from the 8th council district, who identified that they have gone to, they are members of many groups right now, and really don't want to be forced to be part of a neighborhood council. And so one of the things that the charter shows is that it's an option. It's something that the community needs to exercise as a tool. It's laying there, but it will not rise on its own, that the community needs to organize. So I have told Rosalind that, from my viewpoint, the department's role is really to facilitate and provide resources in terms of getting the community organized in the sense of space, professional facilitators, supplies, things along those lines, not necessarily having trained organizers coming into the district, especially, and I was very blunt with her, that I thought the responsibility of having organizers was really either my office's responsibility or the community itself. And so during my election campaign period, I had basically vowed to the community that I would work to fundraise, to get funds, and set up some organization in the community specifically to hire organizers from within our community to facilitate department and neighborhood councils. So the concern about having these long-term institution, for me, is not as weighty as maybe some other individuals. But I believe that the compromise of two years and the reevaluation is an appropriate direction to go in at this point. But for me, I've already committed to getting organization. Some individuals have organized themselves. They will, they have already asked me to support them and get them some funds to hire some full-time organizers from the district. And that's the direction and how we're going to handle our neighborhood councils in the 14th district. But I've shared all this with Rosalind way in advance and many times.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Who's his question?
Mr. Ridley Thomas has moved the previous question. The others who've asked to speak have each spoken once, but not twice. Open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll. Never mind, it's passed. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Walters.
I had indicated no vote on this.
On the previous question?
Oh, no.
This is just on previous question. We're about to...
Yes.
All right.
Make it a two-round, two-years-long.
All right. You need to...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Assistant City Attorney Les Brown. I just needed to make a point of clarification prior to taking your vote, so that you understand the consequences. There was a proposal from one council member that if you were to vote against the exemptions, that on a second vote, that you could vote for exemptions and put a limitation on that. The charter does not provide for that in its...
All right. Well, so let's ask, let me ask you then, if we can't do that, that was Ms. Mizakowski's proposal.
Correct.
Ms. Goldberg had a motion in which, after we, if we do indeed disapprove the mayor's communication, we would then, you have to restate it, we would move to exempt the senior manager, but not the other positions.
I think the best way to do that would be...
Can we do that?
Would be to go individually through each exemption that's proposed and vote yea or nay on those.
But in either case, we would first have to vote to disapprove the mayor's communication. Is that correct?
You would, you would vote on the mayor's, on the, each exemption individually.
On the mayor's communication in pieces as well?
Correct.
Point of information, please.
Yes, sir.
Do I understand that if we disapprove the mayor's communication, we cannot then impose a two-year...
That's correct.
That's correct.
We can't do that at all.
No, that's not provided for in the charter.
The charter is...
What hap, well, I'm not finished yet.
Does it say you can't?
Wait, I'm not finished yet. Excuse me. Then what happens if these, if the mayor's communication stands, if we don't, if we don't approve the, if we don't overrule the mayor's communication, they're not exempt, is that correct?
They are exempt.
They are exempt.
They're all exempt.
But what we can do by ordinance, can we at that point, by ordinance, make them civil service at a certain point? By ordinance?
By ordinance?
Yes.
No, I don't believe so.
What do you mean, you don't believe so? Can we or can't we? Do you know?
His advice is, the city attorneys, no.
That we cannot.
No, you cannot.
And you're, and you're certain of that?
But, but, Mr. Burnson, he did, he did say that we don't have to wholesale approve or disapprove the mayor's communication. We can take it position by position. Right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. As, as the initial vote.
Yes.
Also, one of the same lines, Mr. Brown, what provision in the charter precludes the council from placing a limitation on an exempt position?
There is, the provision for exemptions gives the power to make such exemptions to the mayor. And there's no provision for the council to place limitations on those exemptions.
But if we reject the mayor's recommendation, or whatever it's called, and then choose person by, or position by position to exempt, aren't we then exempting?
No.
No, that's not what he recommended, Mike. What he said is that we would, instead of just a blanket vote, there's no second motion, we just take each position separately. The mayor has sent a communication saying that...
I understand. Say, say yea or nay to the exemption of that position.
To each one, each one. And that's it.
Correct.
I got it, I got it.
All right.
Point of order.
Yes.
Again, looking into a question of the city attorney, reading the section of the ordinance, there may be a way to deal with, I'm not sure how, we need the city attorney's help. Under the exemption section, it says, "If the council does not act on the recommendation within specified time, it shall be deemed approved." When the position is vacated, the exemption shall terminate unless reauthorized in accordance with this section. So it seems to me that we, the council, have an ability to reauthorize or not, clearly only on the question of vacation. But we might at least tie to that. I'm not sure how long people who would get this might stay with it. But it seems to me that that is the only latitude. And if the city attorney can work with us on utilizing that section, if we can make it broader in any way or something else, it might be a way to facilitate what the council's looking to try to do.
Well, but it's, I'm not sure we have a consensus here in the council about what it is we want to do. I hear two separate positions being articulated, and there's a third one implicit, although we haven't heard that yet. The two separate ones I heard articulated were that we should exempt the senior manager and not exempt the others. And that was one position. The other one was, we should exempt them all, but only for a specified period of time.
Which we cannot do.
And there's an agreement so far by everybody that the senior manager should be exempt. So it sounds, yes, Ms. Stewart?
I just would like to say that in, in coming to your decision, understand that you will, by not approving the mayor's recommendation, essentially hobble the department for the next six months in continuing to do its work. Because without the staff...
No, but, look, that's not quite fair. You won't be able to have exempt staff. But nobody has said you won't be able to have staff. So that's not really a fair...
Well, but the timing, as you know, to deliver this plan to you in six months, less than six months, the process to bring on civil servants, to create the class and to go through that process, it, it won't happen.
Well, if we don't get to a vote, if we don't get to a vote, nothing will happen. So, all right. Yes?
President?
So much for the previous question. Go ahead.
Well, I did move it, and...
Yes, you did. And everyone agreed to.
I'm prepared to honor that action, Madam President. But I don't know that I particularly appreciate being accused of hobbling the department, if I heard the language that the general manager, I don't mind hobbling Mr. Burnson at any point that I get an opportunity, but that's beside the point. I think the, the department and its current staff might elect to be introspective about why we are where we are, and then assess who is hobbling the effort for an effective neighborhood council movement in this city.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Let, let us, on the advice of the city attorney, take this blow by blow by blow. The senior manager is first. Senior management analyst, one. Now, just a minute, I want to make sure that, Mr. Brown, I'm going to need your...
One by one?
Mr. Brown?
Certainly, yes.
I need, I need your advice here to make sure that people know which way they're voting, what they're doing if they vote. Do we, are we are voting to approve or to disapprove?
You would be voting to disapprove.
All right. So a yes vote would be to disapprove on the senior management analyst, what did you just say?
Point of order. I have a point of order.
Before us is the mayor's recommendation.
That's correct.
On a senior management analyst.
You agree.
We all agree, so we should all vote yes.
So in that case, we vote no. In that case, we vote no on a motion to disapprove. That's what I'm trying to ask him.
The motion is to disapprove.
The motion is to disapprove.
Okay, then we vote, then we vote...
So on the senior, no. Okay, on the...
He says 10 conversations from July 14.
Can we move, can we move to separate the question, then we can vote affirmatively and negatively, obviously?
I don't know. Ask Mr. Brown.
Can we take position by position?
Yes.
Yes, that's what he asked us to do.
So as...
But in each case, the motion is to disapprove...
No, but it doesn't have to be if we can separate them.
Okay.
Because I'll move approval of the first one.
Right. The mayor's action stands, if this helps clarify. The mayor's action to exempt the position stands unless you vote to reject his...
No, no, that's not the question. The question is, can I move each position one at a time?
Yeah. Now, that one's...
And then, when you move each position one at a time, what I'm trying to establish is whether a yes vote exempts it or overrules the exemption.
And I'm going to move, I'm going to move as to the senior management analyst, that we accept the mayor's recommendation to exempt it now. Okay.
I still have a point of order.
Yes.
I have a very simple question. If, we receive this July 14th. It's within 10 council meeting days. And my question is, are we on day 10, or are we at day 9? Do we count the 14th as a meeting day if we received it that day?
They told us it was today.
Wow. I, some people are basically on the date it was, that's on the memorandum versus the date of receipt. It, it matters to the charter. It says when you receive it.
Well...
There were three meetings. One was on the 18th, the 19th, and the 21st, that's three. The 25th, the 26th, and 28th, that's six. The first, the, excuse me, first, second, and fourth, that's nine, and today is the 10th.
Okay. I'm just checking.
Okay. So let us return now to the question...
As to the senior management analyst.
As to the senior management analyst, we all agree we want to exempt it. What I need to know from our attorney is whether the, we should vote yes on Ms. Goldberg's motion, or whether yes means we're disapproving it.
No, yes, the recommendation of the mayor is to exempt. So by your saying yes, you're saying yes to the recommendation.
Okay.
On just that one?
Just on that one position. So on that one position, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
All right. That one position is approved. The second position, Ms. Goldberg.
Okay, the second position are the, is the senior project coordinator, and I would move that we reject the mayor's exemption request. And that would mean if you vote aye, you're voting to reject.
That's right.
If you vote no, you're voting to accept the mayor's recommendation.
Of exemption. Okay. Open the roll on...
Senior project coordinator.
Senior project coordinator. Open the roll. And wait a second. Now, what?
Ask for an aye vote.
An aye vote. Okay. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
All right. So that motion has been...
Failed.
Has failed because it takes 10 votes to disapprove. Exactly the vote count I predicted. Moving right along, the next one is...
The project coordinators, and I would move that we reject the mayor's...
All right. And so, and how many of these, this is...
Seven positions.
Seven people. All right. Open the roll on the motion to reject. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
And that shows you what the charter does.
That's what it does. Okay.
Takes two people and makes you guys gods.
Well, right. And plus the four of them who aren't here. All right. Ms. Walters.
Ms. May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
How long, when did you first come on board? October. So you've been there almost a year?
Almost a year.
Almost a year. Can you tell me why, I know civil service proceedings take a long time. Why that wasn't started, put it, the wheels put in motion for that at that time?
I was brought on in October, and I received budget in December, and staff started in January. So the ability to actually take a look at how to structure the department didn't actually begin until January.
Mrs. Walters, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is, since this is...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We finished the agenda.
Thank you for your patience.
Certainly. Okay, item 65 was called special by Ms. Walters.
I understand Ms. Walters is satisfied with that item now.
Is that correct? All right. Open the roll on item 65. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And I think, are we at the end of the agenda?
Now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Public comment. All right. This is the time for comments from the public on items not on today's agenda. Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members of council, Richard Robinson, neighborhood organizer. I reside at the seven-star motel in Jackie's district in Hollywood at Hollywood Boulevard in La Brea.
I've already missed my...
Ruth the pimps and dope pushers victimizing the Taiwanese owner of that motel belied the Hollywood Jackie envisions. the Hollywood Jackie envisions. Thank you.
Thank you, that closes the public comment period. What's next?
Motion for posting a referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Councilmember's request to be excused from council. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused on August 15th, to leave at 10:45. This requires a motion.
Well, Mr. Fewer moves, Mr. Hernandez seconds.
Councilmember Subornich requests to be excused on Tuesday, September 19th, to leave at noon, Friday, September 29th, and for personal business and city business meets policy.
Yeah, that's, that's approved.
Councilmember Wax requests to be excused on Wednesday, August 16th. A motion is required.
Did we count him already? Is that going to break a quorum?
No, it will not break a quorum.
All right, in that case, Mr. Padilla moves, Ms. Mizakowski seconds.
And Councilmember Subornich requests to leave at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, tomorrow. This for city business. This requires a motion.
All right.
Excuse me, this meets policy.
It meets policy, okay. Well, we'll let him do that, he usually does it anyway. Maybe we'll be done by then, you never know. Okay, anything else?
The desk is clear.
Adjourning motions? Anybody besides me have one? Members of the council, on behalf of Mr. Ferraro, and I'd like to join him as a co-sponsor, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Frederick C. Dockweiler. He was a longtime Los Angeles lawyer, handled a lot of historic legal documents for the Getty family until last year. He's the last Dockweiler. He was 91 years old and born in Los Angeles, attended Loyola Law School, graduated from Stanford and from Georgetown Law School, served in the Army during World War II, and was a lawyer for a long time in the 19, early 1950s. Mr. Dockweiler was a key leader of opposition that blocked a federally funded public housing project in Chavez Ravine, which then, of course, brought us the Dodgers instead.[1694.83]